Welcome to the January 11th, 2024. Happy New Year, everybody. And can we please... Oh, we need the secretary in the absence of the secretary. I will call the board. Vice Chair Dennis Finerdy.
Present.
Glorian Burke, Secretary absent. Craig Cattinolato.
Present.
George Mutu.
Present.
Tom Neely absent. Kate Fulham.
Present.
We have a quorum. Please join in for the Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and eternal. I opened this window. I was stuck. The other end, I think it gave over the last three. I was at the town board.
Well, you can go back there if you feel comfortable. We have a vacancy over there.
No minutes to approve, so we'll go into our afternoon work session. Claire, 157 West Montauk Highway?
Yeah, so this is a work session. Work session, um, November. And the board had some questions. Janice had been speaking to the applicants, as was revealed at that meeting. So the applicant is back to your work session. The public hearing on this is January 25th.
It's Jan 25th. Okay, yes, this is where the diner is in Hampton Bays.
I brought some materials.
Oh, great, great. Janice said, yeah, we would like a little history on it about what's gone on here, what has been proposed, what doesn't work.
You could take the nice one.
Thank you.
Stick around.
Thank you. This is history?
That's some history.
And this is present?
Apparently, yeah.
Are you... I see, okay. And David, how are you?
Jackie Orie.
Happy New Year.
It's freezing over here. Is it a window?
I do love it because we needed air in here, Janice.
We'll heat it up.
Look closer. There's an extra one. Okay, so we invited Janice to give us an overview, a background, historical background, an overview of this property, which is so important. It's iconic. We've seen you before at another session, but please introduce yourself for the record.
Matthew Elward with R&amp;M Engineering, civil engineer.
David Gil Martin-Greenberg, Troyard Council.
Alex Benalenti, BLD Architects.
Welcome.
Great, welcome. And Janice Schirr?
Janice Schirr, Town Planning and Development Administrator.
Okay, Janice, why don't you start out with this interesting corner?
Sure, so just by way of, you know, talking about the bit of history related to the diner initially when it was for sale, we did want, you know, at least in planning, and we asked at the time, the town board, to consider buying it. They would have used general funds. They really didn't want to have to do that, burden taxpayers for that purpose. So there was an idea floated to do a swap, which is this.
So then the basis for the swap, the reason for that?
The idea was to maintain that gateway and move them over. In order to accomplish that, the other part of that, there was two parts to that. It was not only to move them over to the west. So the diner is, as you know, at the intersection of Montauk Highway and 24. It's right there. And then there's a parcel right next door to it that you'll see says Southampton Town. And we purchased that CPF. And the notion at that time was, what if we ask the current, the then owners, it's my understanding, this is now? New owners, new contract, new lease. The then owners, if they would be interested in us, same for same, you see in the survey I sent, gave you, same amount of land for same amount of land. Move them over. We would take control of that gateway piece. And also, as part of that whole thing was to extend Good Ground Road, which was not embraced by the community. People did not like that idea of letting traffic into Hampton Bays. We had also, just to be fair, said it could just be one way out from Springville going out to the light. So that whole stretch of Montauk Highway would be avoided, but it was not, it was not embraced, to put it mildly. So that just went away. It just didn't work out. We didn't go forward.
Also, wasn't the mechanism complicated here? You had to...
No, it was just a matter of, well, there was an alienation component. We did get state approval, and it had to go on a ballot. We never went on any ballot because there was such a, you know, a lot of upset in the community about that. So we didn't move forward with it, and that was that.
So the town still owns this parcel?
Yes, still owns.
Bought with CPF.
Bought with CPF, not going anywhere, staying that way. The Good Ground Road extension is not moving forward because without getting through this diner piece, we can't, you know. So that was the other side of this. Like in moving through their parcel, which they did provide some cross-access on the site here that I see, right? Proposed future cross-access to get out to the light. But that's not the same as like a road per se. That would be driving through parking lot, and it's not ideal.
Yeah, and our issue, Janice, and we talked about this, is that, you know, there's no roundabout here.
Right, so I also gave you a roundabout picture, a schematic.
Concept plan?
That was drawn by DOT in 2017. So obviously, all that would be subject to DOT approval, but you can see it doesn't really encroach on their property. If it were built, construct, it would encroach on the CPF property over by the atrium. There would be some encroaching up there. But I don't see it truly affecting them, especially as their building is set back 50 feet. So I don't think it would really be, even if we say this all came to fruition, it wouldn't impose on the building. So the biggest concern is we want to make sure that building is set back enough that you would have that room.
Like we do turning radiuses from the planning.
If you ever were to implement that traffic circle, we would just want to make sure the building isn't like smack in the middle of where you need to get, you know, the land area. So that looks like, I'm not saying this is the final design. This was a schematic that DOT themselves drew. So they knew what they were looking at when they did it, and we got it from them.
Well, it's the perfect space, location for a roundabout.
We really, you know, all the accidents that happened at the atrium and that log jam that goes on there, this would be fantastic.
Now, if somebody is coming out of the diner site, how do they get into that traffic circle? Just curious. They'd have to go east, right? East and around. They would go east and then just around the circle?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You just would...
Feed right into it.
That's nice. It feeds into the circle.
So it's not terrible?
No, it's good.
You know, I don't know how you all feel about your design based on this knowledge of this schematic, but you should consider it. And then the final piece is, I gave you from the comp plan, a little picture. Yes.
Yeah.
And that was just, is there an actual... That's just from the comp plan, and that was the, you know, the idea was the extension of Good Ground Road in here, but the other thing was the visual focus and sort of what you're seeing from at the terminus of 24, and making sure that's consistent with these proposals.
It's sort of like a welcoming to...
Yeah, it was a little more landscaping. Obviously, this was centered on just having a roadway through and keeping that all natural. And that's where this whole notion of the swap came in. So, and you kind of see the building in the background. So looking at the elevations and the renderings, I would just say, you know, it'd be good to, if you're going to do this, to design it to keep this recommendation in mind.
Well, the big, the issue that, when we looked at this site plan the first time when you were here, you know, lining the driveway up in terms of traffic in and traffic out was tricky. But there's something here that has to be maintained. What was that?
There is a drainage easement.
A drainage easement.
To the recharge basin of the state.
The drainage easement. So it pushed you way over to the west, right?
To the east.
To the east, sorry. So that...
Yes.
So that made it even trickier in terms of getting in and getting out.
Well, it just didn't allow, it didn't allow us to then take that building that was in the back and kind of shift it forward, right? That was really the conversation in that. That's why both buildings were kind of staggered to the east of that easement.
Yeah, yeah, pushed over there, yeah.
But it lightened that.
I think we also weren't really up to date on what was happening with Good Ground Road extension.
Well, unless, you know, someone wants to bring it back to life, it's pretty much gone, you know, like it was foreclosed on. Property, and this is, I only have one copy, but you're have, feel free to check it out. Pass it around. That was the concept there on how to create that roadway. Even a one-way roadway, you know, like Woodbridge, you got a 50-foot dedication there. You have, you know, you continue, you know, more than anyone that this was meant to extend. But, you know...
It's parallel to the main street, so it would have taken the load.
I heard a lot, you know, it's a road to nowhere, blah, blah, blah. It was a road to the light to alleviate traffic on this stretch. But it just got a lot of bad press, a lot of bad, a lot of people were upset thinking that if they hated, you know, stopped that, then the revitalization of downtown would not have to go forward. I mean, even if it was a bike path, it would be great, you know? Even if it was a walking pedestrian or bike path.
Oh, yeah, it could be, right?
Could be, yeah.
It could be, and that would be great. It could come up through the CPF if it's a bike path, you know? So that's another option.
So that parcel could be used for...
Oh, yeah.
Passive park.
Passive park or bike path through it, that would not be a problem.
I mean, it has to be used for something. I mean, this is moving forward. And I know you were very patient, the applicant, in going through all of these scenarios. It took a long time for you to finally say...
We were involved in that in the beginning with the supervisor.
You were very cooperative and hopeful and...
The thing is that the, from what my understanding in the public of Hampton Bays, they don't want the entrance, the gateway, to just be like, walk the Hampton Bays, like get an X-ray type of thing. So the more you can make it like still a gateway and the treatment of lots of landscaping and more lush and not just sort of aligning it so you're just looking at parking is important, I think, to everyone involved.
I mean, it is a good ground, right?
It is a very critical piece.
Hampton Bays.
To ensure that it looks good, the buildings are attractive in the way. There's a lot of nice landscaping, and of course, people like to have their signs, you know, things about, the happenings in Hampton Bays on that CPF piece, you know, right in the front.
On the CPF piece is signage, yeah.
So keeping that in mind and keeping the traffic circle in mind are really all the things you can do at this point.
Have there been any updates from the county on the traffic circle? Anybody communicating with them about?
We have been.
You have? Oh, go tell us.
We met with the county, and the county had made no mention of any traffic circle. All they requested was to go to the state, and the state would take lead on this. They wanted some improvements in the sidewalks in terms of curb cuts and things like that. So then we went to the state, and the state made no mention of this. They actually gave us a nicely well-written comment letter just requesting modifications to the existing intersection as it is, but made no mention of future dedications, future preparations for a roundabout or anything.
So do we have dual jurisdiction over this?
It is.
State.
State and county?
County is Route 80, and then 24 is the state.
Okay, so...
But this traffic circle would be the state.
Correct. The state owns the signal, and then the, so then the state takes precedence over, and the county just...
And they even, they designed this, like I said, 2017, so it was quite a while ago, but they did design it, and maybe it just never went anywhere with them, but we got it from them. That's how I have it.
When did you speak with them?
The state actually just gave us comments November 15th, and then followed up on the 28th. And we met with the county probably just before that because we went to the state at the direction of the county. So probably met with the county, I would say, November, late October or early November.
Yeah.
So based on the letter, are there any improvements that would preclude this from happening? Probably not.
Well, they're not.
I mean, it's really in the existing right-of-way when you look at it, except for up in here.
Correct, correct. They actually requested areas of dedication for their traffic signal equipment for the existing signal.
Where is that?
Which spans from here across. So the way the signal is set up today, it's actually on the diner property. So they're just, they're just looking for a small dedication for that, for that new signal pole, for the existing signal pole.
They want to stay on your property?
Well, now we have to give them that piece of property, that small little five-by-five area.
But they have that big pole right there, and you can't...
Wait, maybe that's a leverage here.
Yeah.
So what I'm saying is that all their comments were directed towards maintaining that signal.
Maintaining the signal. How big is, what is it, a box or...
That's the pole. It's the signal pole that's holding up the span.
Yeah, there's a tendency to put utility poles in right-of-ways. The one that's on Scuttle Hole Road is right in the, smack in the middle of the roundabout. So that's the history.
That's the history. We would have liked to have bought it. We would have liked to have moved them over.
Sure.
Neither of those things came to fruition. Now, we would ask to heavily landscape, keep an eye on the architecture, you know, ensure that it's not just a gateway into a parking area, you know, really.
Yes, so that we're not...
The way it was lined up, the way I saw it previously, it was a lot, it was kind of...
Is that, do we have this?
Yeah, this. Like sort of you're looking in at the spaces, so I don't know if there's anything you could do to help that design. But when you're sitting at the light, you're kind of seeing more spaces. The more you can put landscaping treatment and things like that.
Yeah, we have the 50-foot, the 50-foot landscaping from the right-of-way back. Seems like it would be a little bit more than what's in that sketch there, but we could heavily plant that, absolutely.
Yeah, so that way you're at the light and you're seeing your trees.
We'll get your landscape plan, bush, you know, whatever to...
Maybe double rows of that?
Exactly, different staggered heights.
Is there any scenario where you consider removal of diner as the application's progressing? Or is your council going to advise against that?
You mean remove, you mean taking the structure down? We'll consider it. It's been under consideration, but, you know, my instinct is to not do that.
I know. I said, is your council going to mix that?
What's the age of the diner?
Does it fall within the landmark preservation?
It's heavily altered.
Heavily altered, yeah.
I mean, right now, it's a nice, or loving Hampton Bay.
Yeah.
People have told me that for years.
Well, it's quite iconic, you know?
I wouldn't say that its current state is iconic.
No, it's been closed, right?
It's also, it was seriously renovated years ago, and I wouldn't consider that contributing to the structure in any sense of the word.
No. There's not much to, to, it'd be nice to now have it go for another season.
So each one of these buildings, how many square feet?
The front building is 8,000, and then the rear building is 6,000.
Six.
Yeah, plus or minus, yeah.
And it's HB, right?
Yeah, cumulatively, total of 15.
And there's sufficient parking for everything?
Correct.
What's the likelihood of working with the county and DOT to implement, like through site plan approval, the roundabout situation, sort of bringing that back up? I know they issued non-jurisdiction basically.
Essentially, so they turned it over to the state.
But if we're looking at that planning and saying, hang on a second, let's work together because if they're, you know, you're going to be doing the curb cuts and then later, you know, come back, is there a coordination that could happen to sort of like bundle that work? And then you wouldn't have your dedication because there would be no signal. It would just be a roundabout.
Right.
I mean, that's why I invited Janice to come up here to give us this history because when we talked about, yes, we looked at that. Yes, we looked at that. I mean, and there, and it's a major planning issue, you know?
We would love to...
Yes, we have the ability to talk to the state. Obviously, we've been in contact with them, and we can bring this back to them and see if there's any...
Would you?
But really, the other side of that is Fred Seal or Assemblymen or someone who can get us state dollars to put it in is more so than the state may be like, oh, no, we're programmed out for five years. We're not doing that. But that's not the same thing as us saying, we need this, put it in your program and, you know, know that, and put some federal infrastructure dollars toward it. That's not the same thing as...
Did the state get some transportation funds from them?
There's always transportation money out there, and I think that we, this would be a great project, but we would need other levels of the state to get involved. So it's not just at the regional level of reviewers.
Beyond scope of the town.
It's beyond that. They're not going to do, it's at the people who are making the decisions as to who's funding what and programming it out for the next five years. So that would be the level that I would recommend. We reach out to Fred Seal and try to get some coordination with the community who does want something like this. There's a lot of people who thought that having two, one by the canal, by Reckler, and one over here would be great, you know?
Well, it's interesting because in your, also in your climate action plan, there's a big percentage in that pie chart of emissions that are spewed into the air from traffic, a very high percentage. And boy, do you have it right around here, you know, with all of these, when the traffic is heavy and people are just stalled and polluting even more. So a traffic circle would certainly help in that level, too.
Yeah, from the idling and...
From the idling, yeah, yeah.
Agreed.
Just as long as it doesn't delay us a lot. We waited a long time to get to here.
So you want to build two buildings, and how many parking spaces do you have?
Eighty-nine.
And that's what you need?
Eighty-nine required, eighty-nine provided.
And eighty-nine provided.
That's still a type-one action, though.
Proposed cross-access.
Plus a cross-access between both west and east.
Which would then coordinate the traffic impact and coordination with the state and the county.
So, I mean, is there a link from Good Ground into the cross-access or not? Are we missing a piece?
No.
No, there isn't.
Well, you have a...
Good Ground?
The Good Ground Extension.
They put future cross-access on their plan. But again, it's not like we envisioned in that document I have circulating. It was planned to be like more of a multipurpose roadway, you know? And that would not be anymore. That, you know, seat here, like, was, you know, the idea. We'd have bicycling, walking, pedestrian usage, and then cars and lots of trees and stuff like that, and you'd be able to go from Springville instead of waiting at that light to make the left to get off 24 and just go down that road and right to the light.
Janice, when was the last discussion?
Probably a year or two, a year or two ago.
So it's pretty current, and they're, and they're current in terms of...
Well, then the changed hands, the gentleman before your client.
Our client had it for about seven years.
Oh, okay. What about the person that died in Florida? Wasn't he the guy that was before, you know, not him?
Joe's here.
Just how you feeling, Joe?
Oh, okay. Sorry.
His heart's going a little bit right now.
Is that Charles?
He lost weight.
No, no. How is that original?
So, okay, then that was not the case. I'm sorry, I was mistaken. But the idea of the swap, they were willing to entertain it. It all, you know, it got as far as the state saying okay, but it had to go to a referendum and the town board at that time.
Special ballot or part of the regular ballot?
It would be on a regular, general election ballot. You know, that's where we put all our land swaps, and that would have been one of them.
So I don't recall that it was discussed here. Was it discussed with the town board?
It was discussed with the town board. And then if you go back in like 2017, there was a lot of, you know, negative press about it, and the public consensus was, wasn't wanted.
Not to do it, right. So, I mean, what Janice is doing is trying to impose solid planning concepts here to make this work because it is a very problematic area. I mean, I'm hoping that people who are coming to these buildings will be able to get in and get out easily because it's, it's...
That's why we have that.
And believe it or not, this is my first seeing of this, but the arrangement of the traffic circle, the proposed access that we're proposing and the locations of the building, the access lines up with the roundabout. It's at the correct location. So it's really, what we have proposed will be adaptable with minor improvements to tie into a future traffic circle.
So that's, I saw that, like, wow, that's not bad. First, I was thinking, oh, no, we're in trouble.
It's not bad at all.
For the purposes of our discussion and consideration, we have to do this without traffic circle.
Correct.
You have to look at it.
It could be 20 years out.
Yeah.
Exactly, and which is what I'm saying is that the proposed, our proposal for the curb cut can be reused, so the one that we're proposing with the access to the current traffic signal can be modified, minor modifications to now adapt to. You know?
Right.
The buildings don't have to move, but the buildings are part of the curb.
It's going to adapt to us after we build that.
Yeah, well, that's, looks like that is what they're doing here because that building is there.
What's the proposed accessible ramp that's marked on here?
That's ADA.
That's just the ADA curb ramps.
Oh, okay. So there, we have one point in and out. An out, a right turn only, right?
There's a, on the west side, there's a right in on the, you're heading eastbound.
You can make a left-hand turn, yeah?
And then...
Oh, because there's a signal here, right?
And then there's the two lanes exiting. So there's one, if you come in from the signal coming southbound, you can go north. And if you go north, if you're heading eastbound west of the site, you could just make a right in prior to the signal.
Not only the diner has housing component, is there any housing for the...
No.
At the same year? No.
Medical offices?
Yes, well, medical and office.
Both.
We don't know the ten, we know one ten.
The north building is medical office, and the rear building currently is professional office.
Professional offices, okay. And do we have the sufficient landscaping areas in all this parking? Every 20 spaces, there's a planting?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Staff.
Yeah. Well... We tried. Maybe the state, maybe the state will...
It wouldn't, we are not foreclosed on the traffic circle. That's good news.
That's good news.
Good Ground Extension, you know? Maybe it could be a bike path instead. That would be nice.
But this will forever put an end to discussion of Good Ground Extension?
Well, yeah, unless someday someone else, you know, these buildings go away and someone wants to do something different at some point. You know, at some point, you, your, every decision when you build something is like an eighty-year, 50, 30, you know, like usually the buildings last at least, you know? Unless they're poorly built, which we really don't like to do.
But we need to get moving. Yeah, I got you.
Yeah, no, we get it. We appreciate the work system, too, with Janice. It's very, very helpful.
I mean, I just, you know, I know a lot of people are really wanting the diner here for some other use that's, you know, more...
Restaurant, more community.
Community-driven, but we also are trying to plan a downtown where all that community, you and me have one, things like that.
We're we're about the only people that wanted the diner because it was available, right? My daughters and my wife might love to go to diners, but it just wasn't the call for it in this space. This is what, this is what the market is telling us that's needed.
Well, there's that little restaurant right, it was a big restaurant right next door, right?
Yeah.
South Friendly's.
Yeah, the old Friendly's.
Yeah, six months.
Yeah.
Remember, that's how we got the CPF property because of Friendly's, remember?
Yeah.
Remember that?
Was there a concrete building in one of those lots that we demoed?
Yeah, it was a historic building and that was.
Okay, well, let us know if something else.
We'll see in two weeks.
If you get the charging stations in the park.
Yes, charging stations, if you wanna put in a couple of charging stations.
For sure.
And any solar components that you can fit into these buildings? I mean, we're not mandating it yet, but we're really pushing it because of this climate action plan. Thank you.
Do you wanna take the material?
Do you, do you wanna stay?
Karen, do you like? Yeah, we'll see, probably.
Okay, closing out the morning work session, uh or the afternoon work session, going into regular session, and we're gonna go right, because we have Janice, we're gonna go right into the climate action plan, which is number seventeen on the agenda.
Great, so I, Seth is coming next here.
Oh, yes.
Oh, good, okay.
I've been trying to have Seth be in my, and working with the green committee and really looking at this plan.
Oh, good. Good. Good.
And so I'll let him sort of read off and um everybody receive this digitally, but we want to give you your own printed copy as well,
I'll pass it down.
so that you have them.
I read it and made questions.
Fantastic.
Go ahead, Janice.
Okay, so as we know, on December twenty-first, the board adopted the climate action plan by resolution twenty-three fifteen thirty-six. Uh this plan provides a strategic roadmap to becoming carbon neutral in the town by twenty forty. Uh the board intends this to refine the sustainability four hundred plan and the comprehensive plan. Uh in order to accomplish this aspirational goal, it sets seven climate uh priorities uh that will decrease our greenhouse gas emissions, enhance community resiliency, and improve the ability of the community to adapt to climate change. Uh in passing the CAP, as we're gonna call it, or CAP, if that's okay. Uh basically, the town said, we are going to do, base our decision-making on how we can reduce greenhouse gases. And in doing so, we can try to avoid the uh the terrible effects that might come with it. Uh we now find ourselves in the implementation process. Uh since the climate action plan offers a list of proposed actions, the town board would take input from the planning board on implementation actions.
So will that be by code?
Well, it can be, and that's where we're getting your input on that, so.
Okay.
Um so, I can run through all the different uh.
Actually, I'll give this out for you, these are, this is what he's reading from.
I've given him out, there's actually a page one.
Oh, you gave them?
Did, there in page.
Oh, excuse me, they're in the.
Jackie doesn't have one.
Oh, but I don't have it, so I'll take.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not sure, is that the right one, no?
Oh, it's not? Oh, wrong one, excuse me, I just snatched his papers and, I'm sorry, Seth.
Do you have another one, Seth?
Uh I do.
This is the summary, you're right, okay.
Thank you.
Uh yeah, so we have uh tran- uh clean transportation, yeah, building.
Yes, so there's seven strategic priorities.
Yes, and they are buildings, clean energy, low-carbon transportation, sustainable design and land use planning, materials and waste, carbon sequestration and removal, and capacity building. Each one of those will offset our greenhouse gas emissions by a certain amount. I could dive into each one individually, but since we wanna make this just a summary, I'd like to call your attention to the sustainable design and land use planning. Uh that's found on page seventy. I think these in particular will highlight what the planning board is already involved in and would be a great way to start our discussion on the recommendations to the town board.
Like the enabling actions, that's really what you're looking for, right?
Precisely, yes.
And also, I think, yeah, to say, okay, you adopted this plan, where do you, where do they start? You know, it doesn't have to go in order, or you can say, we think you should focus on these things over these things. You know, each year, we'll be bringing forward different initiatives to implement the plan.
Right.
So now is the time to weigh in on how you think the board should begin its implementation of the plan.
I mean, so right now, you know, we ask for electric um charging stations, we ask for solar panels wherever it can be done. I mean, we do do those things, but there's nothing behind it, it's not mandated, you know, and no one's required to do it, so.
Exactly.
That's a key shortcoming.
Yeah, it's like a master plan.
Of of the plan does not anticipate the town using its regulatory tools.
Oh, it does, but that's the question, so like under, so so Seth kind of just laid it out in this document, so we have like a little bit of a, yes, we go in order. So the first uh strategy, SD one, is incentivized transit-oriented and mixed-use development. And they're saying, you know, this is what you're familiar with, promote TDRs shifting from open space areas into downtown areas. So do you have any, like, we already kind of do that, we have that code, any comments or recommendations on that aspect? Is there anything that you, you know, it's not working, or maybe, you know, you may remember Critical Wildlands, where at one point we were talking two-to-one transfers or coastal resiliency ideas for transfer. I mean, you don't have to give me it now, we don't have to know all this now, it's just that think about how that might be, what would we implement, how would we implement a better, a better, more robust TDR program? You know, if if there is such a thing, where ours is working just fine and we don't need to, you know, that's the idea. And then um.
Similarly, action, action item four in the in the incentivizing transit-oriented and mixed-use development would be to encourage development around the the centers of commerce. This is something I've heard you discuss and perhaps that's something you'd like to add some more.
Yeah, do you want?
You mentioned it ten, fifteen minutes ago when I asked about the housing component of the diner, no? Not anticipated.
Right.
Absolutely.
So, but like, um in other words, is there a code that the town board, you would recommend, the town board,
Recommend code change, enabling code.
um consider codes to.
To do that.
Do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, or like a mixed-use uh code, maybe that's the answer, we don't really have that, we don't even have that.
Right. And we talked about that.
Believe it or not, we don't have that.
Smart Growth, do you remember Smart Growth, it was all about mixed use in downtown.
That is the strategy.
Yes.
And then it just that, just sort of evaporated for longer.
So maybe here, and the, just the discussion, it was because we just wanna be able, maybe we'll just write like mixed-use zoning, that's one idea, if you have others.
Commercial development within a certain, you know, proximity to the downtown should require, like you do in HOHC, require a residential component, doesn't have to be affordable, but even even its market rate will allow people to live and walk up the areas
Walkable.
near shopping and, you know, transportation.
Okay.
We talked about, I remember this was some years ago, Dennis, you remember?
Yeah.
Um putting hu- housing above, uh like say the Bridge Hampton Commons, housing above the stores, you know?
So that helps utilize existing infrastructure, which is a whole point.
Exactly, exactly.
Think of downtown, say, Harvard.
Yeah.
That's great, yeah.
Yeah, there are apartments above most of, all of those commercial spots.
Okay.
I like the idea of the mixed-use zoning, you know, oftentimes, you know, we we run into frustration here because we don't have the zoning for something, but wouldn't it be nice, and it, the zoning doesn't exist, so.
Well, that goes back to our regulatory tools that we have in this town to do that.
Yeah. Right. So you're looking for some enabling legislation to support the implementation of this stuff?
Yes, and that would be your recommendations would say, you know, hey, we need this.
We'd have to have another session with you because.
Oh, yeah.
There are ninety of these, but.
Don't forget, those those kind of developments that we'd like to set, and it's also tied into wastewater flow that's allowed on the site too. So is there a way we can use our, you know, um TDR bank, our development rights bank to fund,
Yeah, we do it all the time for.
to allow those sorts of things to happen in our neighborhood when we need to.
But something like the diner site has, is a wet use, pre-existing wet use plus a residential component, and the the use of the proposing is is a fraction of what they have pre-existing, and they're kind of giving it up.
That's true, although, just so you know, we we are trying to plan the sewer for the entire business corridor, so that would.
Extend it.
Extend there, but that would, you know, they would not be, we're trying to keep the residential, if there is gonna be resident- residential density, it would remain in that walkable.
Main street.
Main street.
Yeah.
Janice, remember the checklist you you presented to us last time we were here?
Yeah.
Maybe we can add some checklist items, uh you know, uh conforming to the recommendations in the in the cap.
Great idea, perfect.
You know, this this way, it, you know, as we go along the process, we could consider these things. You know, shortly before the holidays, I I took an online course about um managing heat in cities. So now, of course, I'm the expert in radiant heat and and ordinance and the like. Um but honestly, at no point in the three years of have I, that I've been here, did I consider such a thing. You know, now that actually makes sense with this, because energy caused reflected surfaces near, you know, glass doors and the like, it's gonna come off. So having a check mark here, we're gonna say, oh, yeah, Craig, remember CAP guidelines.
See, that's why we want you to take those.
And community housing plan, um I don't know if there's gonna be an analysis of where and what kind of housing is needed, but that should be a cross-reference of whatever code structure is put in place for the mixed use.
Agreed.
Great, Janice, you've got sixteen years to do this, right?
Twenty forty is the goal. Oh, that was like me personally, I'm.
Get going.
You cannot lose.
Okay, so action five.
So that's sixteen years, right? So I wondered if there's a a yearly blueprint, like year one.
Well, that's kind of what we're heading toward, maybe you can help us develop such a thing, this is like a high-level plan.
Yeah, this is, yeah.
But the the devils in the details and the actions are in the implementation of the plan. It's like, you could have pie in the sky, like, yeah, town should do this, the town should do that. But the truth is, you have to really then look at each one of those things and then we do still need community input on those each things and those strategies, and will they really work? And is this, is this truly feasible? So it's an ongoing process.
So so along those lines, I have a question, do you have a baseline count of any residents, of all the residences that have solar? Is there a a a inventory or directory of that?
Certainly, we could look by permits.
Yeah, we could do a query on GIS.
You can, I mean, I think some of that baseline information is really critically important in terms of doing a report. Like, you know, so January twenty twenty-five, it went from four thousand houses to eight thousand houses that have solar panels.
Yes.
Um, you know, I think that's just critical to get a baseline from where we start.
Okay.
We have sixteen years to do it, so.
Great, so action five?
So, yeah, we could move on to action five, again, this seems to elicit some great discussion, some ideas, so.
Are we, are we having a chance to review this in more detail?
Oh, yeah, yes.
This is just high-level now, and we just created this sheet, so we'll talk, put it down, we'll come back, you'll have more to say, we'll put it into a report.
Yeah, yeah. Can you tell me where this is?
Yes, we have it in our offices, we can share it with you, it's a whole big spreadsheet.
No, but where is this photo?
Oh, the photo.
I went crazy trying to figure out where this is.
I I know where it is.
You, it's it's here?
Bridge Hampton, near Miko.
Hampton Bay?
Somewhere.
Oh, it's Taupla?
It's Taupla?
Taupla, oh, okay.
That was mine.
Yeah.
It is a great job.
Uh if if we could, yeah, let's again go back to page seventy, the the strategy SD one, and perhaps look at uh action item five. Again, this would be really in your purview and something you've digested before many times, and that's the creating complete street standards uh and safe routes to schools, increasing uh residential connecti- connectivity. Your feedback here.
And then it says, and require fee and lieu are not provided, so we're not actually doing that. So other towns, like the town I worked for before I came here, you're mandated to put sidewalks in. If you don't put sidewalks in, you put money into a sidewalk fund.
Oh, interesting.
We've had a lot of that.
We don't do that here at all, um so that could be something that you recommend.
No.
Yeah, but don't forget, decades ago, the the town board, you know, enacted the whole country road standard, which does not call for sidewalks.
True, but if you're doing a um safer to school plan, uh you know, where, let's say it's a subdivision and it's in close proximity to a school, which we don't really have a lot of those left.
Yeah.
But if you did, or somebody's revitalizing something, or something along those lines, and you were like, you need to put sidewalks in, you know, you've had this argument with people, um we should have sidewalks, no, we shouldn't, the one-off county road thirty-nine comes to mind. Um if you just had a code that said you're required to put sidewalks in unless it's a country lane or something, then there's no question. And then it's just a matter of whether or not they need the criteria to put them in, and if they don't, we put them in a fund, we then we have revenue to put them where we need them, in the same family.
I wonder if you could, if you could share the uh the park, the parking fund money, wherever that money is, you know?
Yeah, maybe you should take a look at that.
It's a sort of an invisible fund, but you know, the, but people pay into the parking fund. But but there's no, no land essentially to really put parking in, you might take some of that or have some earmarks for the uh.
Yeah, so that could be a comment.
For side, yeah, for sidewalks.
So so maybe you'll think about whether or not you require this fee and lieu idea for sidewalks as a code amendment, and then recommend whether or not the town board should do that, and then also say, and if you do collect this fee and lieu, it should be available for municipal parking or whatever other things you may need.
Right.
Uh.
What is a district energy system?
Uh that's uh using thermal energy, it's uh interconnected commercial sites, which they share their their energy gen- co-generation of heat is is fluid between sites, that's my understanding of it.
Okay, because Bridge Hampton Commons was.
Yes, being a high, high-density areas, they can share their energy usage and I guess.
They can, but don't, they don't do it now, no.
No, they don't, no, that would be the idea.
Yeah.
They'd like to incentivize that, develop the idea, um do some studies and see if it's something feasible. Uh certainly something we can consider together and and look into.
Um are we on SD two, the strategies of SD two are those energy, so you see one through eight on page seventy-one. So, yeah, so you see S- SD one has one through six, so those would be what we're looking for, like, you know, your support on implementing them, your comments or concerns on implementing them, how would we go about implementing them? For all of these that relate to land use planning, um and any others that you feel you wanna weigh in on.
The problem is I I see a lot of terms like prioritize or participate as opposed to implement.
Well, all of it, you know, sure, how do you participate? That is implementing it, how do you prioritize, that would be implementing.
Doesn't give direction, it doesn't really state that, we have the regulatory tools now. I mean, back in two thousand twelve, this town um significantly amended it, amended its energy code, um which significantly exceeded the state guidelines, and I remember all the builders and developers, they were screaming and pulling their hair out, this can't do this, this is communism and.
Oh, like earth, sweet certification.
Yeah, well, sure, earth, everything.
I didn't start with the solar pool standards, changing to, you know, the side, the way pumps and the hand of pipes and everything operated.
Yeah. And this was implemented in the code, just like, there it is, so why don't we have a code, all new residential structures shall have solar panels?
Well, you can, that's the point, and you would be saying to the town board, do that. Or you'd be saying to the town board, we want, and we're approving a subdivision, we want the ability to require someone to be solar-ready, meaning the orientation of the house has a south-facing route, it's not this way, but it's that way, so they can get the panels on the back for the sun.
And put the panels on.
Yeah.
And you're saying, and put the panels on, but it, but the, you know, of course, there's always a monetary burden and the town board would wanna consider that, but but even if you just orient the house that you built so that, or wire it and it's ready to be accepting solar panels, because the builder doesn't necessarily want to put the solar panels on, the homeowner might.
Yeah.
So at least if you made it solar-ready, that made it that much easier for that person and and the cost, you know, you don't plant these huge trees, right, that are gonna shade the whole thing, except that maybe on the north, you know, on a different side, where you're not gonna interfere with the panels, and you're gonna think this all through. So just the full-on mandate is some of the concern for some people, that that we, we wanna make it easier, but not necessarily be people over the head.
IA systems come on.
The IA system come to mind.
Triple the cost of conventional stuff.
But we pay them for that, so we make up for that.
No, new construction has to have IA system, started in the waterfront area, now everyone's gotta do it.
Oh, new construction, well, that was so.
The house in Flanders and the house in Bridge Hampton, and at first, everyone cried, pulled their hair down, and then and then it happens, it's part of the code. The these diner people, we're gonna talk to them about solar, and they'll smile, tell us, you know, think about it, and they won't do it. Although it's type-one action, you have a little bit of, but you really need that regulatory, and it's not hard to implement.
So are you recommending they not be on solar-ready, that they?
Be on solar panel, any new construction or renovation exceeding fifty percent of of uh of the area, like we do with FEMA regs and everything else, when you do a FEMA renovation, if you have a certain flood zone, fifty percent is triggered, FEMA compliant, done.
You know, a certain area of maybe the south-facing roof area, um you know, the detail of it.
That's how you get, that's how you get compliance.
Yes.
Throw in onsite battery energy storage.
It's like recycling, you know, when recycling was mandatory, that's when people, it took a ti- a while for people to gear up, but and the same for the um battery chargers, car chargers, you know?
Yeah, that same thing in commercial parking lot.
Same thing, commercial, all commercial parking.
EV car, I got require EV car charging stations, renovations over fifty percent require solar and solar-ready regulations, onsite battery storage, um which we already do, I mean, most people.
Right. Right. Yeah.
If you have solar, it makes sense to also include that, right, versus like connecting back into the grid, it's a resiliency issue.
So I don't expect that we'll give you more now, because you know, you're the.
Yeah, we want you to be able to get to.
This could go on sometimes.
This could go on, but people, this is exactly what we're looking for, for your feedback and for your ideas to then bring to the town board and say, here's what the planning board thinks you should start with as far as implementation. And then they're gonna say, here's what the green committee thinks you should start with implementation, and we'll go to the community, where do you wanna start? And that's how you, you know, we have to begin.
Are you doing, you're going to the other boards, like the conservation board and those boards?
We didn't, but we could, so.
I think the conservation board would be a good place to get input.
Sure, I mean, it's, it would be new, we don't typically go there for referrals, so uh.
Well, they always give us really good referrals.
And especially the town board, it should be used, use the regulatory tool. And especially the town board, it should be use, use the regulatory tool that you currently have. That'd be a simple, you have that ability. We've done it before.
Okay.
I'd second Jackie's comment, because there is definitely, you know, there's a sustainability element in terms of looking at energy. And, and then there's also the conservation, like environmental sustainability aspect that really needs to be gut checked.
Sure. And there is recommendations like hiring an arborist, expanding, clearing, A P O D, um, incentivizing green.
Yeah.
Um.
So, John, is on the clean energy, there's a comment about evaluate degraded under the lies, use of brownfield sites as potential. Do you have an inventory of those sites again?
Certainly we can develop one.
I, yeah, I'm, I mean, I get quite practical about that.
In, in certain, well, obviously in Riverside we do, in David White's land, we have a, a Peker plant that we're looking at reuse, adaptive reuse of when they did commission it.
Yeah. Re- purpose in for local areas.
So, we have, um, some sites, and we can develop an inventory, and that's a good recommendation.
That's a good project, you know? Maybe you can get an intern from the college to, to help.
That is one of the recommendations, I believe, uh, is to actually bring on a sustainability, uh, staff member.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
And it would be another referral on our part, just like we do trails advisory and, yeah.
The town should have, you know, a traffic engineer and a sustainability person.
I'll add that traffic engineer.
We've been saying, how many years have we been saying that?
I know, poor town.
So, we'll kinda keep thinking about it and, and we'll kinda just collect these into at least initial recommendations.
Oh, yeah, great. It's a wonderful, wonderful question. Oh, just to repeat, it was so impressive in here when that pie chart that you had about. The emissions.
Vehicles, mile travel.
Sixty-four percent vehicles and equipment for emissions. I mean, and, and then people say to us, oh, there's no traffic impact, right? I mean.
There's definitely an air quality component.
Air quality component. There are many times this summer, Anthony and I talked about it, where there's been a, an air alert here because of the emissions.
This, that's one of the real strengths of this climate action plan, is it gives a really strong quantitative assessment of our emissions. And then you can look at each item individually. You can see how we can offset, or we can bring those emissions down. So, it gives us a budget, a framework to, to really start diving into, well, which, which plan gives us the best bag for the buck? And, or how quickly can we do it?
Who worked on this with you? What company?
Ramble.
Ramble, yes.
R A M B L?
B O L L.
B O L, oh, Ramble.
Now, I'm sitting here thinking about what Dennis said. Just kinda processing it all. Because, uh, you know, if you're going to implement a plan with a stated goal, then you have to imple- implement, you know, protocols, restrictions, and, you know, things in order to get there. So, my, my knee-jerk reaction was actually to go, oh, wow, that's heavy-handed government to, you know, pretty much, you know, write legislation. I said, no, you have to. But if you're going to go for it, you have to go for it, right? That's, so, you know, ha- you know, putting, you know, putting in the language into the code, saying, well, yeah, this is.
Do you remember recycling?
Exactly. Yeah, exactly.
You know, when you, when you could or you couldn't do, it was up to you. Nobody recycled when it became mandatory.
Right. Right.
And that's, you know, there is a waste management component section to that, and that's important too. I mean, even, we don't really require it, and, uh, but we should start like at least a pilot program where we have a compost, um, program. Where people can just compost their, you know, vegetable scraps. We're doing that where I live, and we bring it, and all the farms take, take them. And it's, it's wonderful. And I can't tell you how much we fill this five-gallon bucket.
Yeah.
Right.
With just, you know, orange peels and carrots.
Eight shells and everything.
Yeah, yeah, and you wouldn't believe how much, but you're diverting that waste out of the landfill. And you're, you're turning it into gold for a farmer and, um.
It's, it's amazing how quickly people get used to, to, you know, new things like that. And regulations like this actually for the benefit of all of us, so.
It's a greater good.
Yeah, and also just providing these programs in these ways and these partnerships with farms and partnerships with others that we can formulate.
So, Monteen's Infinity today.
And, uh, be able to, you know, accomplish these goals.
Yeah.
But I know you have a, you have twenty forty as your goal, but if you can break those sixteen years down into what you want to accomplish, or what we want to accomplish. The first year, second year, third year.
Well, that's what we thought was important to come and get like.
Yeah.
Your recommendations on, and then that would be the idea, to create a schedule, an implementation schedule.
Top solar June first.
Can you, can you upscale geothermal? Can you make it, um, you know, part of a development as opposed to individual housing units?
Probably.
I believe so.
So, that may be something you want to put in there too.
And that was one of the other recommendations, was like creating like an infrastructure, lots of people that don't wanna put solar on their house or can't. Cause it's like, maybe it's A P O D, maybe you don't have, maybe you have a lot of shade.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe instead of just, we s- we set aside a lot for, for recharge, but why couldn't you put some solar panels on a lot like that?
So, I am available.
One last, big, something very topical.
Ron School and his camp, and Teresa just told me he has that geothermal.
Oh, they do?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, for the campus.
There are some people who are putting it in. You have a lot of people who install, you know, who know the geothermal systems.
That would be a good training thing too, to learn more about that.
Absolutely.
So, there's been a lot of discussion about B S lately, right, especially in residential. Um, I don't know if we're going to see very many more industrial parks in Southampton town. But I think, um, B S infra- infrastructure should certainly be part of any industrial park that we consider from this point forward. Um, this was, it's away fr- away from, um, residential or whatever.
Residential. Because you know, we're tying on that, right? I mean, the law we have right now, again, I still maintain it, inevitably envisage utility scale. So, it's just, but that law that we have is actually, the way it's written, if you cap it at six forty kilowatt hours. For industrial parks, for commercial buildings, for the two buildings that we have proposed even for that. It's actually a pretty good law to encourage people to, but you can't mandate it, right? It really is a good reference, take advantage of putting in a battery storage system, which can be used in many different ways that, that, that people don't think about necessarily. I did some training too last year when I went to, um, up to Albany for that course. And I, they had a couple courses on B S, and I thought it was me, it was the energy, so the utility scale. But there's really training on what happened behind the meter, and what people in other parts of the country are doing with up to one megawatt of, of storage. You know, to, to even shave things off, like a peak during the day or, or peak, peak demand, which reduces your annual bill for the entire month, if you could reduce your, your initial demand. And people are doing that. They, they find creative ways to use energy storage more so than just for, you know, the backup for, um, for this, right? So, to save money throughout.
Right, like offset, on peak, off peak.
Right, and, and even, even by throwing it back on during the day when it's expensive in the afternoon, for example.
Right.
You know, and there's a guy from, um, from generate company did a very nice presentation on that. But, you know, what we have is, could, could be served pretty well, but, I, you know, it's really the owner of the buildings who does that. Here, people do a lot of spec building and then lease it out, so then who's paying the utility bill, you know?
Yeah, it would be nice if there was more of a comprehensive energy plan, right?
I just feel today that they're, uh, tapping, um, earth, the core of the earth that's molten to create geothermal, uh, energy.
Yes.
Wow.
So, instead of going, we're going down into the earth.
Iceland.
Tesla.
Iceland's all geothermal. It's just amazing, amazing. It's everywhere. Clean, free.
Yeah, right.
Well, yeah, they're built on.
Sometimes they're too geothermal.
Geology.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm, I'm still here for one more. I'm sorry, all in the audience, who listens to me.
Oh.
Is this the Riverside? Riverside sewage treatment plant?
One last, yes, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm available.
My solar system since two thousand twenty, October, has only been one hundred and twenty-seven thousand pounds.
Wow.
Just yours.
Just mine.
Well, that's what I was saying, like you add the solar and then also require the onsite storage, then you're really like, you know, decreasing that peak.
Okay.
So, um, now we're doing Riverside sewage treatment plant.
Do we have a handout?
Which is great.
So, this is a supplemental G E I S. I just wanna give you a moment of background.
Supplemental to?
So, we did the Riverside.
Oh, the Riverside.
And that zoning is all predicated on there being sewage treatment.
The sewage treatment.
And so, ever since we've been working on sewage treatment side of things, which is to, um, as you know, in the enterprise zone subdivision. That's where we've been aggregating properties. And to be able to put the, the treatment plant, which is on the backside of that purple and yellow map.
Yeah.
You'll see the, um, schematic of the treatment plant in the subdivision. And, um.
This is the enterprise zone here with the horseshoe.
That's right.
Yes.
That's there.
So, the, so the entire one side of it, we've been aggregating all those parcels, so that we could place the treatment plant within that industrial subdivision.
That's right. The west side, right?
Where, John? The, okay, here.
Yep. So, we, um, we had, I, I can't remember where I left off with you all, I'm sorry. That, that, we did a value engineering report. Did I bring all this up? Okay.
No.
So, in order to avail ourselves, Environmental Facilities Corporation is the, uh, lending arm of the state of New York, right? And so, in order to get zero percent financing for thirty years hardship financing, we engaged with the E F C for a process called value engineering. Where they looked at our plans and sent it through an entire different team of engineers and people to evaluate whether or not we were spending the right money. Or we have a good plan, is it the right kinda system, all these things. And they then gave us this value engineering report. We used that report as the basis for this supplemental G E I S, which so basically it served as the scope. Because it laid out all the issues that they had with our initial plan. And it said, look at alternatives. And the alternatives that we were required to look at in this document are, okay, do you really need to use a constructed wetland up here to put the effluent? Can't you do it onsite? Can you, if you can do it onsite, can you inject it into the ground? Or can you do leaching pools, or can you connect to riverhead? Look at all these options. And that's what we, that's what is happening in this document. We looked at every option under the sun to say whether or not, what, which one would be the most cost-effective and environmentally beneficial. We think, we would love to do the constructed wetland thing. We're still doing that constructed wetland regardless of the sewage treatment. The town bought it for open space anyway. And the Conic Estuary Program gave us a hundred thousand dollar grant to do a whole wetland, uh, design, design there.
Hmm.
Where the dredge spoil, there's like dredge spoil material there.
Yeah.
So, we had thought as part of the sewage treatment that we would put the treated effluent there and restore the wetlands. And water it basically with the treated to drinking water below drinking water standards effluent. Um, the state said they didn't really like that option because of the flood plain. And, you know, the water you put somewhere, you know, they really don't like that. So, they weren't keen on that idea, um.
Did they give you money to do that, to report? Did you get any funding, any grant money?
The value, the state, E F C paid for the whole thing.
Oh, great.
And not only that, so there's, there's good, more good news with all this. So, we went through this whole process, then they said, okay, well, look if you can inject it into the, underneath the group, inside the aquifer, but under the, where you get your drinking water. Like way, way down, like you're saying, a thousand feet.
Under the Magathie, under the.
Into the Lloyd.
Into the Lloyd, which is not the drinking water.
Yeah.
And we looked at that, much more, they thought it was cheaper. They didn't realize it was a thousand feet. It could get clogged. There could be iron. It's hard to clean, whatever. So, that's what this goes through. Oh, oh, we've landed on the conventional leaching pools, which requires Pine Barrens hardship. You may recall this subdivision is fifty percent clearing restrictions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have just applied, Teresa did that application. She'll be doing the public hearing at the Pine Barrens Commission to make that hardship application. We think it's a good application because we also are, have bought so much property in these areas that offset.
Offset that.
This, and the duds, the, that's, could come from the rap. Um, so.
And, and overall, even at full build-out with the eight hundred thousand gallons, which is phase two, we're not even at that phase yet.
We're only at four hundred thousand here.
Only at four hundred.
Which half of which is existing flow, and the other half is new.
New flow.
To flow. And even that, we still remains to be seen as whether or not we need to allocate some more existing.
Right. But even so, once at eight hundred thousand gallons, everything gets treated to tertiary treatment, under ten hun- uh, ten milligrams per liter. That's still less nitrogen that going into the, the, um, aquifer and the Conic River than currently is existing on the site. Uh, in the region, rather, because those are all outdated cesspools and conventional septic systems. And I did a, a quick report, um, last fall. Only eleven homes in the Riverside community has been able to afford to put in new I A septic system. Only cause they had to outlay the cash first, and because it's a distressed community, they didn't have the cash to outlay. So, only eleven, you know, in the.
But that's actually a good thing, because we want, and what we'll do is, we also have C P F money dedicated to all this. We will use the, the C P F money to hook up everybody and do the work as a public works project, so no one has to.
Piping, galvanized piping or plastic piping.
Lateral, you know, connections. We'll deal with all that without anyone having to outlay any money, uh, all the existing people.
Yeah.
Do they have to opt in, or is it like everyone is mandated?
The, the county actually has regulations that mandated within two years when the sewer came online.
Two years.
So, so, yeah, so, um, yeah, so this G E I S is really looking at the impacts of putting this treatment plant here. The, um, easements and the forest mains and all that. It's still not fully engineered, by the way. We're still going R F Q, and we're, we're going to be, we announced that, and we're gonna be selecting an engineer who will further design, get to us to a hundred percent design. But with what we did have with the engineering report and everything, all the work we already did, um, Nelson Pope did the C K R, Tom Limbo and Nelson Pope. Nelson Pope and Voorhees did the C K R, and Nelson Pope did the initial engineering report. We were able to list the project with E F C on their intended use plan. And then they are able to allocate us significant amount of money, which we still haven't gotten our word letter yet. But we're hoping a, a very significant amount of money will be paid by, from the bipartisan infrastructure.
So, what does the structure look like? I mean, is it a massive like?
It's going to be a large concrete building. I believe the building itself is a hundred and twenty by a hundred and sixty, no, two hundred and one times a hundred and forty-six feet.
It's the size of this room, maybe.
It's, it's going, no, it's going to be very large.
Oh, much more than that.
Thank you.
Huh?
Yeah, much more. Two hundred, two hundred feet is.
Two hundred feet.
Twice that?
They're like these modular, and they call them trains, and they put, like, each one is like two hundred thousand gallons, so.
It's about the size of the.
Yeah. Right.
It's a, each one is a treatment facility, right? You gotta get them all to turn it around.
Yeah, it's, it's just a one-story building. I would say, you know, two hundred, two hundred by a hundred and forty is probably the width of town hall, two hundred.
Yeah, so it's about almost the size of a football field.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, it's one story, but it's set back from county, uh, state route twenty-four, Flanders Road. Um, you know, it, we'll, we'll have to remove a, uh, quite a few trees and vegetation in order to put the leaching pools in. Um, but the area top that could be restored with native grasses and other low-lying shrubs, um, without as much deep root systems as like trees.
And there still will be a buffer, a twenty-foot buffer around it, so from the road, you'll never see it.
And there still will be a buffer.
Does it impact the, uh, in- enterprise, uh, part of it?
Only in as, no, only in as much as we just have to shift the roadway over.
The road.
But they'll still be able to, there won't be any problems with that.
Get in now.
Right. And if you look at this map on the back, you'll see phase one is the building, the access road, and the, um, leaching pools to the south of the property, which is the yellow highlight. Um, that's phase one. That's the first four hundred thousand dollar, uh, four hundred thousand gallons. Phase two, if we ever get to that point, based on, you know, development pursuant to the rap, which, you know, targeting back to the, uh, last discussion, is a mixed-use.
It is, yeah. I remember, there's beautiful lending, you know, that.
Um, the overlay. Yeah, it's mixed-use. It's an overlay district. It's not as of right, but it's an overlay district. Um, if that ever gets fully built out, we will have to do phase two. Um, but we're working on getting, uh, full engineering plans on that.
Great. That's some advanced planning. It's terrific.
Yeah, it is.
Very impressive.
So, just, just to go over the alternatives again real quickly. Um, the reason why we can't go to the Riverhead Sewer Treatment Plant is, um, they don't have the capacity to, uh, you know, accommodate the Riverside community. Also, it's prohibited by their town hall. Um, the constructed wetlands is in a flood plain, but also it's less effective in the wintertime when the plants are not growing. And then the injection wells, um, the value engineering ind- indicated that they thought the wells would only be a hundred feet deep. But that's only applicable in western Long Island, where the Lloyd is much shallower. Here, it's a thousand, thousand feet. And then you also have a clay matrix pursuant to U S G S, which could be problematic for the actual infusion of the effluent. Um, and I don't know if Suffolk County would ever agree to injecting.
Yeah, they won't even call me back when I left a message about injection wells.
Put wastewater, you have to put.
Cricket.
Not likely.
Call me back.
In the groundwater, you know, I mean, it's something that the E P A can permit. It's class five non-hazardous material that can be injected under E P A regulations. But, you know, the, the county doesn't seem very friendly towards it.
They've got studies on it, that it's not going to affect the.
It's just too new, and they don't want any mother, and we don't really like it either.
Yeah, people, they, they plan to do that, it's actually, in, in California, they're looking to recycle it back into drinking water.
Yeah.
Into drinking water.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't want it in drinking water, but you would have to actually know that there was a pocket enough in the aqua, in that layer, in that zone
We understand that. Yeah.
It's clay, it's, yeah.
to accommodate it.
Yeah.
And it's just like, it's too complicated in a lot of ways, we just go with the straight-up leaching pool.
It's too new, people. People will always have this, this thing about, you know, no matter how well it's treated, better than tap water right now, I think people, there'll always be that reluctance to.
Yeah. Sure, the psycho- psychological effect.
Yeah.
Do we know, like, so, I noticed, what happens to the, to the wastewater from the Suffolk County building, the jail, the sheriff's offices, and that stuff?
That's the other part of the, so that's about, so the Riverhead.
So this is just on this other side of, outside of boundaries, if you have, yeah.
Yes, so they are, the county center and the jail is in actually Riverside, in the town.
Yeah.
It's in Southampton, yeah.
Yes, and so, Riverhead came to our public hearing, and they were like, you should put them in your district.
Yeah.
Because they're contracted into Riverhead, and they have a contract that expired in, and in twenty seventeen, and then they extended it for ten years, so it expires again in twenty twenty-seven. It's almost like us getting off the heat from the school, and they want them off.
So, so it's kind of going to, so.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
And so they're gonna have to do something.
Something.
And they're gonna come looking, so why don't we just include them in the district, and so we'll respond to all that in the FDI, FDGEIS?
Right.
We looked at it, it's about a hundred thousand gallons, we could do it, you know.
Is it about a third of the capacity, or?
Well, out of the four hundred, it, you know, we would only leave a hundred of new development.
Yeah.
Uh, maybe a hundred and fifty, depending on.
Well, that's what you're factoring in your face, too, would bring that, that whole.
Yeah.
So maybe they could reduce the population of the prison.
We wouldn't be against it, well, they tell me that, that Riverhead actually was saying that to me, that actually it's getting smaller and smaller.
What a common sense.
It is, it is.
Um, and they're pretty much processing people and going to yap, hang.
Okay, that's curious, I, yeah, I didn't know they were connected to Riverhead, but I was gonna suggest that there'd be a good chance to, to pull them into this.
And to. And honestly, that would be, um, you know, revenue there, and, uh, right off the bat flow, and there's a pump station right there, it doesn't make,
Yeah.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
it, it makes sense, it's not.
Yeah, where is the Riverhead, uh?
Sewer treatment plant?
Yeah.
Indiana.
It's by the golf course, in, on Indian Island, in fact, they have a, a beneficial reuse plan to the golf course in the summer to propagate.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
What about, of course.
It's on the other side of, on the park.
And they, if having so much, you know, residential, ha, multi-story development downtown, I can imagine it can use all the fluid it can get.
Yes, although they tell me that's not what it's for, they say that it's really for the western, um, going along the Conic River on West Main Street, it's all that, like,
Fifty-eight. Uh-huh. Yeah.
disaster over there, and they wanna fix all that, so it's really not about the multifamily in the downtown, they're just looking to, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The county buildings and the jail.
Uh, no, no, the, Riverhead wants the county off, so they can, they can revitalize western Main Street.
No, on the other side, yeah. On the north side of the river.
Expand the west.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, like from around the, um, library.
Library.
Yeah, like to the west, but that's the end of their multifamily, like, right there, by Farm Country Kitchen, but then all that rest of it will be
Yeah.
Yeah.
Lowe's story, but trying to revitalize it, 'cause I don't know if you've seen it lately, but it's kind of.
Develop. It's, it's a mess. It's a mess.
Some great property right on the river, but, you know, the, the property themselves are not very.
There's a restaurant right on the river, you'd take your life in your hands if you were dead on there.
Yeah.
Oh, I know. And, and the, their, their sewer district does include portions of Route fifty-eight, I know for a fact that the Lowe's building is connected to the Riverside.
Mm-hmm. Is that right?
Hmm.
So, um, so, yeah, so.
God, what a complication.
So I don't know if you have time to look at the link, or provide comments, it's on the website.
That's terrific. It's on, it's on the, uh. Uh, uh, okay.
Um, the record's open, and it's gonna stay open until at least February, so we can come back and think about it.
Is there an action required on our board, are we involved?
We would like you to comment on the record, but the record's gonna be open for some time, so if you don't necessarily have, want, you know,
Okay.
your thoughts aren't all ready yet, we can come back, um, so you have.
I think it's a great location.
And you are going to end up seeing this again, because we all need site plan approval.
That's good. Yes, that'll be, yeah, so any comments on this DGEIS, the alternatives we discussed with you, any comments on how we could do this any better, or?
So, yeah.
That is the, uh.
Is that someone's home?
That's the.
That's.
Church, church.
No, there's like a mess on them.
No, what is that?
Uh, let's see, that's Head Start is right there, this is the bank, this is Head Start, this is, I don't know.
It's not the, uh, it's not the bank, the, uh.
Head, next to Head Start is that one little site.
And there's the building, and then there's this.
That tool place, that weird little tool.
Is that the pipe?
Maybe it's the tool place. That tool place, I think.
Where's the, Phil's talking to school, so.
Is it, no, the tool place is, the tool place is. You can see it, actually, just a little grass right here.
Yeah.
It's below, literally, right here.
Down there.
The school's down there?
The school's right there, yeah, down.
Oh, okay.
Uh, yeah, just, that's it, and then the Golden Orme.
The structures to the, no, the other way, yeah.
Well, north and west, so.
Oh, it's, I guess it's houses. No, that long skinny building there, right there.
That one, oh, that's a, that's a commercial site, that's true arts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're all.
Oh, that's right, mhm. Just one of those one.
Okay.
So anyway, we'll be back if you, if you can think it through, we'll send you the mail.
Thank you very much. So this is what you do in your spare time?
This is what we're doing, in case you're wondering.
If you have any questions, just, you know, you can give me an email or a call, um.
Okay. Great.
Thanks.
Thank you so much, we were, I'm sorry to take up so much time.
Thinking about this now.
Thank you, James.
Oh, no, well, it's a fair and big right here.
Thanks.
Have you listened?
We're getting there.
Yeah.
Oh, and the county board, that's five thousand dollars in our, in the storage.
Oh, wow.
Fantastic, that's awesome, that's a nice grant.
Yeah.
Anthony Rothman?
Who do you want to do?
Ra- Rothman?
Let's say Claire wants to.
No, 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 go ahead.
Oh, what do you want to do, Claire?
Can I just do one, um, add-on, uh, we need to extend, um, our scheduled wave center, public hearing, it's on the twenty-fifth, it must be bumped to the, uh, February eighth because of a noticing error.
Okay, so this is an add-on, wave center.
Reschedule public.
Reschedule public hearing.
To February eighth.
To Feb eight.
Yes.
I'll move it.
Motion by Dennis, second by Craig, all in favor?
Hi.
Post-extensions, um, how many?
Five.
Five in favor, two absent.
Great, and then?
And then Anthony Rothman Dynasty.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just to share some, that's, that's.
Okay.
Thanks, Anthony.
Everybody remembers Rothman Dynasty?
Yes.
So, you might recall, we had a discussion last time, actually went through the, uh, the resolution, uh, which, uh, the board. So you, you might recall the big discussion, everything was largely, we went through everything, um, the big issue was, if you look on the subdivision map, it's that second, um, access on Seven Pond Town Road, had suggested at the time, uh, let's finish up on two thirty-nine referral to the Conservation Board.
Excellent. It exists.
Uh, the Conservation Board, uh, did it last night, they reviewed the application, uh, they approved the, the, the plan as closed and as written in the resolution, including the driveway, with the second driveway, which would sit at eighty-two feet, um, closest point to the wetlands. Um, you know, with, with, with no recommended changes, um, from them, uh, in, uh, in the interest of not sending this back to Health Department for revised maps, with the Conservation Board making the recommendation, I, I, I'm okay with the second driveway, if the board's okay with it, that'll be your discussion. Um, but, uh, we go to page five of the resolution. Like I said, we went through it last time, that little gray hot area, I just have to put in.
Dates.
And, and, and with the highway super ten to the sheet that he was asking for. Um, so on the bottom of page five is, uh, an updated resolution, so we had some changes to the map, uh, required by the town engineer. Uh, B was depicting the disturbed portions, um, that would be re-vegetated, uh, the postal delivery house numbers, uh, removed proposed structural building envelopes, adding a notation regarding declaration of covenants and restrictions, and the high Conic driveway easement, um, another notation regarding compliance with zoning ordinance, uh, specifying the wetland setbacks, so we see all the wetland setbacks, two hundred feet, one fifty, one twenty-five, just like a notation, it's a structural, septic, and that, that, we have it on there. Um, and indicating a deal with basis to dedicate to town, which might understand in the applicant, the owner is doing that. Uh, and then the access on the Seven Pound, that's only gray there to see if, if the planning board wants any changes to fit the board, is okay with the map, and I would just simply, uh, delete that. Uh, payment of the park fee, uh, removal of the roadside stockade fence, um, along Seven Ponds Town Road, um, reducing the ball fencing along Seven Ponds, uh, lower Seven Ponds Road to four feet in height, um, which, uh, what is permitted under the code. Uh, declaration of covenants and restrictions, and no further subdivision of any lots, no lot line changes without planning board approval. Uh, all new utilities shall be installed underground, uh, no new utility poles for overhead utilities, the three-inch drainage requirement, uh, for runoff. Uh, coverage under the speedies, uh, requirements for the DDC, uh, on page seven, uh, retention of stormwater runoff, um, before, during, and after construction, uh, this is where we start heading into the wetlands, uh, specifics. Uh, so lots one and two are gonna be subject to naturally vegetated, non-disturbance, non-fertilization buffer, um, given, you know, the odd shape of the wetlands and the odd shape of the lots, it varies in width from seventy feet to one hundred feet, um, and it's shown on the map just like that. Um, and that prohibits, uh, really anything from going on in there. Uh, lot two, which is the new vacant lot, uh, so, uh, so the board understands how the wetland, sure, you know, maybe some of the newer board members know, there, there's different wetland setbacks that get applied to vacant versus already improved properties, gets a little wonky with subdivisions sometimes, but be largely, it, keep it consistent with what the Conservation Board does.
Anthony, by sta- by putting the wetlands, current wetlands regs into covenants, is there a possibility of these regs become more stringent, that future land orders could be waiving these covenants, that'll say, lo, I'm governed by the, these standards, why don't we do a generic, um, some sort of a generic, uh, or just a condition, I, I mean, Christine isn't here, but, are these things that you'd want in a covenant?
Um, what we normally do on two thirty-nine, the referral, are the covenants as early, 'cause we, we, we do the same thing, we're, this is what, what the Environment Division would do if they were processing a wetland's permit application.
Right.
If they were to apply the, the, the wetlands, and because what happens, is because the planning board is acting as the Conservation Board, what happens is, this is good for three years, by the way.
Right.
Those setbacks are good for three years, if they don't build or do anything within three years, they have to go back to Marty's office to get a wetland's permit.
But the covenant, I thought the covenants basically are recorded, filed, and run with the land, I mean, Christine, Christine?
If, if I may.
Sure.
In the event that the wetlands change and they are less stringent than they are currently, if they're more seaward of where they are currently, they would, uh, whoever goes in front of the Conservation Board for a wetland's permit, they still have to comply with your covenant, but the setback requirements may change. But if your covenant says, this is the setback from this line, that's what they have to comply with.
Right.
But in the event that the wetlands get larger and they expand closer to the structures, then they have to meet more restrictive. So your covenant sometimes will be expanded upon, um, and the setbacks would be expanded upon. I've been doing this almost thirty years, and rarely do I see wetlands shrink.
Yeah, that's what I mean, I, I was thinking they could even conceivably expand, and become more restrictive.
Yeah, uh, more often than not, I've seen wetlands expand, but in those particular instances, they're going back in front of Marty anyway, and they have to meet the, the setbacks from the new boundary.
Yeah. So you don't see any problem?
I know, 'cause I think what happens, Marty, I see what you're saying, so no, but, let's say the wetlands, uh, do change, um, after the fact. Well, yeah, so now it would be conforming, let's say something happens, the wetlands expand, that new structure is no longer in performance, okay? Because that's what happened, the wetlands expanded, but anything that they proposed after that would be subject to a hundred twenty-five foot from that new wetland's line, by the way.
Right.
Yeah.
That's how it would be done, so, if the wetlands expanded, and then, you know, if they go to do something subsequent to this approval, they would be measuring it from the new wetland's line.
I mean, to me, when you put down numbers, almost seems clean of compliance to, to current wetlands, and, but I, I don't wanna bela- belabor the point.
I, I mean, I've gotta be honest, this is just how we've been doing it, like this as a covenant, um, so, I'll, I'll, you know, I'll continue with that, then.
But it's not just a mess. Yeah.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'll, I'll, you know, I'll continue with that, then, and the next one, lot two is subject, again, vacant, one twenty-five, structures, um, with the exception of that second driveway, which would be eighty-two feet at the closest point, uh, lot two is subject to a hundred and fifty-foot setback for a septic system. Uh, lot one, which is the improved, uh, property, um, it is subject to a seventy-five-foot wetland setback for structures. Um, however, most important, um, the septic is still subject to a hundred and fifty-foot setback from wetlands on that property, even though it's already improved. And actually, I'm pretty sure that property has a new operating septic system on there already. Um. So, and that's cool point, the leaders and gutters, um, required for both properties, uh, project limiting fence, um, needs to be placed at the landward edge of the naturally vegetated buffer, uh, to protect the wetlands.
Anthony, can I ask you to move that bullet up, right under the bullet where you say lots one and two are subject to naturally vegetated, non-disturbance buffer? 'Cause I was just gonna ask you that question, and then I saw it way down here.
Gotcha.
'Cause they relate to each other.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, then after that, notifying the Planning Division, twenty power events prior to construction, uh, starting. Uh, lots one and two are subject to a common driveway easement, uh, and the construction of the common driveway, prior to the issuance of CEO for lots one and two. Uh, six is the submission of a re-vegetation plan to the disturbed areas of the, uh, disturbance buffer. Uh, next page, submission of the common driveway easement, title certification, mortgage consent, uh, town attorney approval of all legal docs, uh, submission of an offer of dedication to the town for the open space and the town board acceptance of sync, submission of the mylar's and paper prints, for a planning board signature, and then filing of that map within sixty-two days.
So this, uh, conservation report that's in here has been updated to?
Well, they, they, we, we did our referral to them, uh, they made their comments, uh, we incorporated what we decided to, and they came up with this.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
We did our two nine thirty-nine referral with the specific conditions of approval, and it's happened before, the Conservation Board comes back and says, we think X, Y, and Z, uh, and then you have to make a decision, uh, majority plus one vote, in this case, the Conservation Board applies criticism as, as, as.
Daphne, do you have any comments on this?
Daphne Vaughn, Service Side Environmental Planning, um, really, this is all in keeping with the many discussions we've had over the past number of years on this subdivision, so, uh, uh, we are fine with this.
Any questions from the board?
The driveway out to Seven Ponds Town, we're, is that one of the covenants that is governing construction, keeping the, the, uh, swell?
Yes, so what I should do in the covenants restrictions for that second driveway is, I reference the, the, um, engineering plans, uh,
Right.
that, that it goes with, so I.
Did they submit those?
Yes.
Will it, is that gonna be one of the covenants on lot two?
Yeah, we should, we should, maybe we should do that, that, that is a possibility, maybe we should do that, lot two with the second driveway, um, will be subject to the, to the,
Yeah, otherwise.
To comply with the engineering.
To the drainage engineering, to ensure that the water flow is green, and, uh.
Right. The culvert.
So is it, is it a bridge over that, that trench?
That's culvert, yeah, the culvert, culvert design, they have the pipes, and then the driveway goes over the pipes, it allows the water to flow underneath the driveway.
Okay.
We've done it before.
And all, that whole driveway is gonna be gravel, right?
I believe so.
That gra- that driveway is gonna be gravel?
Yeah, oh, yes.
Yes.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay.
Move, motion.
Motion by Dennis, second by.
Say.
By Craig, uh, all in favor?
I am.
Hi.
And I hope no, um, for the reasons that I stated before, that the environmental larger issue is much more important than a second access. Thank you.
Thanks, Daphne.
So, next one is hold, hold the tables up, stay out. So for the record, we did a pre-application for this one in 2015, and today we're actually setting the performance bond finally. Finally getting it done. Everyone's familiar with the subdivision, so probably anyone who's Phillips. The map was basically a cul-de-sac right down the middle, the lots on either side, and a chunk of open space in the back. We got twenty-five percent of the subdivision. And by larger, it was largely good design, and we're getting the one single-family lot out of this. You might remember, we tried to actually do a density incentive here, which we were going to get three affordable lots, but we can't do weirdly density incentives in, the dense is part of town. So if you have more than five hundred people per square mile, you're not eligible for density incentive. So in any case, I'm just recommending for the town engineer, we gave us the bond estimate. We accept the bond estimate in the amount of five hundred and seven thousand four hundred and six dollars for the road and drainage improvement, and setting the review, engineering review fee at thirty-four thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars in media expenses, which includes three thousand three hundred dollars final review fee. And then the planning board recommending that the town board accept a performance bond in the amount of five hundred and seven thousand four hundred and six dollars.
Okay, any questions, motion?
By George.
By George, second by Dennis, all in favor? Opposed extensions, five in favor, two absent. Anthony, the Garrison?
Board members on here.
How are you, John? Happy New Year.
Hey, Lisa.
And so we start again.
Still writing twenty-three on your checks, like me, right?
Twenty, twenty-three?
Yeah. You have to scribble them out initially.
Do four.
Thank you.
So the planning board, this is right on the north side of L I R R there, Old Country Road and Lewis Road right in the quad. That's what the board knows. We got, this is town-owned land right across the street here, so this is preserved land. And we're currently looking at subdivision of this property with conservation easements running along this side. We've looked at this before, we're doing a pre-app. This is a property, they've showed a yield map, I believe showing six lots altogether, six lots. And they do account for the park area. Planning board said we'll take a cluster plan here.
Reduce density cluster?
Yeah, and they submitted a cluster. It's actually reduced density for lots, gets you out of the affordable housing requirement.
It's your preferred plan, too.
Their preferred plan. They're doing fifty percent total. They've also got a building permit already to build one of the houses, so that's already on construction. And they're splitting the open space, some to the south, some to the north. You know, while you always try to get one contiguous block, you know, here, you know, we're connecting with that up on the other side, which is good. And here, we're dealing with conservation easements over here. So I think the two open space parks.
Works, works, yeah.
And then the three lots here, the two of them are flag lots, and there would be a common driveway serving those three lots. And then the larger property has its own access.
Good, looks good.
And so you have a report there, which describes the requested action. Let's go to page two. This is an unlisted action under SECR, so we do the environmental review for this. The applicant submitted a standard plan, as I showed you, the yield plan and reduced density P R D plan. And I think the preference is for the cluster plan. This is a minor review under the town code. The park fee will be paid based on assessment, and I didn't put in the number there. So I think, I think Lisa, you did it online or something?
Yes, it's ten thousand seven hundred and one dollars.
So I'll just add the courage value there.
They have to pay the park fee if they do the open space?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right, because they're not dedicating it, yeah.
Yeah, we've had this. This usually makes that face when we have this. We had a public hearing in November, it was closed at the ten day, we have the comments here. Referrals to the fire prevention. Their standard comments, and note on the bottom, the area served by public water and fire hydrants. The town engineer provided comments, just some basic stuff from page three and four. Actually, very little from the engineer, nothing particularly urgent. They will submit a common driveway plan at the time of the final application, which has to be standard approved prior to signature. Conservation board came back with some comments. They noticed the woodland type on the property. They noticed this construction going on. Pre-existing, they noticed there's partially cleared areas. They support the cluster plan and recommend the site disturbance calculation. To note that if you're adhering to the CLUP standards of the Central Pine Barrens. So we did, in fact, put that in our condition. So I just want to check something here. Yeah, because it's in the act of the Central Pine Barrens. Highway superintendent said they would need additional information regarding abrins and drainage before they can make a determination. So they'll get that information when we get it at the time of the final application. Trail advisory says there were no trail applications. Health department just simply said they have jurisdiction over this project, but they don't have a pending application. The Central Pine Barrens reviewed and came back with some comments. You know, they note in here that it's subject to the CLUP standards. They also note that it is going to be the planning board that has to make the determination as to whether or not they conform. I won't go through all their stuff because it's not particularly urgent. I just would note that the one comment they made, which stuck out to me, was that technically speaking, under the CLUP standards, if you're doing five or fewer lots that conform to the zoning, it's not considered development in the compatible growth area. However, because this is a cluster plan and the lots are smaller than what the zoning would allow, they raised the question, they're saying that that would then therefore not be exempt, and therefore would be considered development in the compatible growth. I would submit to this board that I think this board can make a finding that a cluster plan and the reduced density is consistent with.
I think so.
So I just wanted to note that if you see that, it's a little, yeah, it's a little strange. And then any of the other comments they made, frankly, we're going to go through each of the CLUP standards when we get there. So it's all going to pertain to the clearing on this property. So as terms to recommendations, planning board supports the reduced density cluster plan. Number two, I do note on here, they're showing roughly, the three undersized lots are forty thousand, forty, you know, they're just over an acre, and one of them is around thirty-nine thousand square feet. So I'm recommending the R forty zoning setbacks, the map they showed, they're asking for R twenty setbacks for those properties. I think I might talk to the board about that. The Long Island Workforce Housing Act, I mentioned this before, reduced density, they don't want to do density incentive, but, you know, because you have an oversized lot, potential for carriage houses, you're going to want to round it, you know, working around trying to get affordable housing. So we just note that that will be addressed, that we'll have to have some type of condition or covenant in a sense, because if you start getting carriage house, you're getting to then, that density, that would throw you into to be affordable housing.
Can you put it up, let me?
What, the map, do you?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm recommending, you know, the street scape along Lewis Road, it's a mixed bag. Here it's fairly wooded, but it's sort of mixed, so I'm recommending a twenty-five-foot buffer along the road there. Just on the lots that front there, obviously the open space, we don't need to do that. Just to maintain the street scape. The site disturbance calculations need to be provided, because I mean, that would start compliance. It said, it appears the project will result in over clearing disturbance records would be required. We're going to, you know, when an applicant submits final application, they're really supposed to be submitting, like they would with special exception standards, demonstrating how they comply with the CLUP standards, so we have something to work with. So we'll ask for that. Number eight talks about that note from the Pine Barrens Commission. So I just note that the planning board is empowered to modify zoning provisions or cluster plans, and so we do note that. Final application shall include a common driveway utility plan for the three lots. The map shall indicate ownership of the open space. It's my understanding at this time, the applicant's looking to retain the open space. So, you know, that would be out of their discretion. And I'm just curious, the map shows a twenty-five-foot corner radius dedication. And I hadn't received any comments from the engineer or highway about it, so I'm just noting that it's in here. I don't know where, do you know where that comes from?
The engineer?
Yeah, I guess.
The surveyor, the surveyor showed it, because typically the town asks for it, and even a portion of the existing pavement actually is crossing over onto the corner of the property.
Gotcha.
So they just felt like to show it now, instead of trying to figure it out later.
So I'll make sure on the final application, we get some comments that kind of about it, you know? So I think, I think actually that, I just wanted to go over a few little, few things just in.
Yeah?
Oh, hi.
Hi.
Lisa, right here, it's John Dennis. Really only one comment. It's very thorough staff report, thank you, Anthony. So it's a reduced density plan, and we've got these three lots that are butt up to open space. This lot, the middle, I guess that's lot three, the lot proper is below forty thousand square feet. Your code, I looked and looked and looked, and Catherine, you may know, but your code, I don't think your code does what some other codes do. They don't take the flagpole out of the lot area. I don't think the town does that.
Correct.
Some municipalities do that. The only time that becomes an issue is for clearing, they don't, but nevertheless, functionally, this little lot, this lot is less than, the body of the lot is less than forty thousand square feet. And it's a reduced density plan. So we were hoping for purposes of allowing more flexibility in terms of spacing out and locating the improvements on the property that the board, which has the full power to do, could consider letting us use R twenty zoning on certainly lot three and four.
Three and four.
Not on lot two, but lot three. This one, I think, is the strongest argument, because the body of the lot is less than forty thousand square feet. This is a, this is, I guess the body of lot does, is over forty, but again.
This one has the road frontage, the greatest distance along here, which inhibits the depth of the lot for placement of
Right.
houses and et cetera with accessory structures behind. So we'd like to request lot three and four.
Just the three and four.
For R twenty zoning.
Yeah.
And then lot two, which is this further back lot, would be R forty, and then our standard, R eighty zoning for lot one, which we have no problems with.
So when you think of the purpose for a side, you aren't just lighting air and that sort of stuff? So we're, the particular ways we're running it, so.
You know, there's also clear limitations that are going to be in property.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't have a problem with that.
Are you going to form an H O A to hold the open space?
I told the client that he's, that's his only option. The town code is you either give it to the town or you form an H O A. And I said he's got to talk to somebody about a filing with the A G's office. I don't know, if it's only to hold open space, I don't know if they make you go through the whole McGiller. There may be some sort of no action letter that they do, but I've told him that's what he's going to do, and I don't do that stuff.
Isn't the A P O D?
Excuse me?
Yeah, correct.
It's the A P O D.
Right.
Yeah, it's a, it's a.
He's got, he has had issues right now with holding the whole entire property, with people trespassing, illegal hunting on the property. So he'd like to.
Be his own steward, yeah.
Correct. And then would be any objection, when it is converted into open space, whether he retains it or it becomes town, on putting up like a split row fence along the street frontages, just to help create an additional little bit of a barrier? It's not a full chain link fence or a stockade.
That would be up to the town, I don't know, I don't know if the town's doing it.
If you can restrict yourself with the town owns it, if the town's going to want it.
I don't know if the town owns it.
The town owns it, they may not want it, or if he owns it, then.
Yeah, they're not going to want it.
But if he retains ownership, even in H O A, then.
Well, but it complies with the zoning.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Split row fences would be nice.
It's not ag, no.
No.
No. But he's exploring the idea of what to do with the open space.
Even to give, even if it's no roads or anything like that, it's a pain in the neck to do a H O A. So I'll have that conversation a month later.
It's going to be a learning experience for you.
It's a, the state considers it a security, so it has to get an exemption from the state.
But doesn't that be the town, it could be another nonprofit, and people, nature conservancy could take it.
Paconic Land Trust?
Because it's.
Can we do that?
Because it's any nonprofit.
Oh, you can do a.
Paconic Land Trust?
I don't know if the P L T is set up to, I know the nature conservancy will.
Nature conserv, I'm saying there's some.
Or some interest.
Oh, I thought it was only the town or H O A.
Yeah, it has to be nonprofit.
Oh, maybe that's a better, maybe that's.
Conservation.
Something to support, okay.
He's just concerned about.
Benefits both ways.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand.
People wandering around.
It's almost two acres worth of open space, so. Okay?
So R twenty on those, so that's.
Yeah, so with that changed, I'll do the R twenty on lots three and four.
Three and four.
I'll make that change with that, then.
Okay.
Motion to adopt the report.
Thank you. Motion, please, thank you, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed extensions, five in favor, two absent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who did the second?
Jackie, who did the second?
Yeah, for sure.
George, George seconded it.
George is second.
Can you hear George, he's still speaking?
I was, I was, yep.
Saying for that panic look like, oh.
I thought she, I thought she went straight to the, maybe, I thought maybe Kate or Craig.
You hear she's a little rusty.
Fourteen Flying Point Road, Anthony?
Nice and easy here.
So the board members, remember, this was the one where we were doing this subdivision, I had to go to the zoning board. This was all done to create two lots, but really to help the property owner who
Preserve the.
preserved this historic structure. They had been lifted, relocated to a different portion of the property and renovated. I wish I had pictures for the board, I will send it to you during the week. Everything's come out really nice, it's excellent.
Oh, yeah.
And actually, even though it's in the resolution, town board's already landmarked the building. So it came out nice, in exchange for that, they got a second lot. And the zoning board granted them the relief to go ahead and get the building permit, so they could have the second lot. So what happened was, all this was being done, and they're trying to close on a property, but we don't have a subdivision map yet. So they came in with the health department approved map, which, you know, we'll see. Have a small lot, you know, for the existing historic, and then the larger lot for the other improvements. All engineering has been reviewed and done as part of the.
I'm not being noted, I represent the hall.
It's moved, right, Anthony, or?
Yeah, so I just.
So what do we need to do?
So I have, the resolution formally approves the two-lot subdivision.
Okay, because that had never been formally approved.
Never been done, wow, okay.
Let's look through.
Any conditions?
Yeah, every condition has been met, they've submitted the legal documents, which have already been reviewed in the room, and they gave the mylar's and paper prints of all the changes.
So no conditions?
So, well, let me just do it formally, so I can sit with the board. So it's resolved that the planning board approves the subdivision map of fourteen Flying Point Road, prepared by Michael Sealy, dated last revised December twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. Subject to the following changes, there were some map changes that they needed to do, just some basic stuff. Payment of the park fee, which was done. The town board, historic landmark, submission of covenants and restrictions, the mortgage consent, and then the filing of the maps. That's it, it's a done deal.
We date it today, okay. Motion. Motion by Kate, second by Craig, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed extensions, five in favor, two absent.
That was easy.
That was easy.
Thank you.
Close the window?
Yeah, please. Temp drop. Teresa, two fifteen S Montal Highway. Oh, my God. Did you have any votes?
Only two.
Two?
Who made new year's resolutions? Yes, right? Hello, with that.
Espresso beans, perhaps?
I'm interested in what's in the can, yeah.
Yeah, we're going for the good stuff here.
Hi, good afternoon. This was the pre-app subdivision application of two fifteen East Montal Highway in Hampton Bay, which is just east of, west of the canal. We had a pre-app hearing in November, and then it was scheduled for review at the December meeting. However, the applicant had requested adjournment and postponement of the review until today. The applicant is seeking a two-lot subdivision. Presently, the front lot, lot one, is going to require a variance in order to subdivide the property as it has to be made smaller in order to provide access to the rear lot and the flat lot. So they are having to go to the zoning board for a lot area variance for the proposed subdivision. The applicant is here via Zoom, and the Fire Marshal's Office, the Hampton Bay's Fire District Engineering, Conservation, and the C A C, as well as the Health Department, all weighed in. And their recommendations are listed in the report. But a summary is that they need to obtain the required variances from the zoning board of appeals. That's item number one. Item number two is in the event that they need, that they obtain the required variances, they can proceed with a two-lot subdivision. This is classified as a type-two action. It is in an archaeologically sensitive area, so they would need to submit a phase-one B archaeological report as part of that final subdivision application in order to screen the resident from, on proposed lot two, from the existing overhead tran. In order to screen the resident from, from, on proposed lot two, from the existing overhead transmission lines as well as the Long Island Railroad, a conservation easement extending fifty feet from the northerly property line is recommended. Clearing restrictions consistent with off protection overlay district requirements is also recommended on the properties. Mainly due to stormwater runoff issues, close proximity to the Shinkat Bay water, you know, watershed and I believe it is technically outside of northern Longyeard bats, but it is recommended that clearing restrictions are established. They are recommending a common driveway for the proposed lot in order to limit access in egress onto to Montauk Highway, which as you know, is a, this portion is a very busy road here, especially in the mornings. Monuments needed to be provided pursuant to the engineer. They also need to provide the drainage for three inch rainfall. It's located in a stormwater management zone and per the engineer's recommendations, that needs to be submitted on a revised map or noted on the revised map. And this portion of Montauk Highway is considered a county road rather than a state road, so that needs to be corrected and a DPW curb cut will be required. And concrete sidewalk should be extended across the frontage of the parcels to connect to the adjacent properties.
Can you put the map up, please, Teresa?
Um. Hold on one second. So as you can see, proposed lot two is twenty-two thousand square feet, but when you exclude the flag, it's twenty. And because you do have to provide the flag to the rear, the front lot is seventeen thousand square feet.
That's a ZBA.
I don't understand it.
Where's the flag?
This is the flag strip here, right here.
The one and a half times is the design, it's the two ninety-two requirement. I'm not sure how they, why they need a variance.
The lot is, the existing lot is exactly forty thousand square feet.
So they would get two twenty thousand square foot lots.
Right, but in order to provide access and a twenty thousand lot, a square foot lot in the rear, they have to provide approximately two thousand and seven hundred square feet of act, of flag strip to the rear.
Yeah, but I mean, the body of the rear lot would be smaller than twenty thousand, but it would be, it would be twenty thousand including the, the flag strip. So how could the, how could the ZBA, it's not a three thirty requirement. It's a two ninety-two, uh, two ninety-two design element. In other words, if we have a fifty thousand square foot lot and in our twenty zone, we don't go twenty-five, twenty-five, we go thirty in the back, twenty in the front. But to create an undersized lot, uh, I mean.
Maybe they just reversed it. Maybe the seventeen.
I mean, granted, the rear lot would have less than twenty thousand square foot.
I, I think, I think part of the problem also would run into the setback in the rear here. If you, if you reduce this lot here in the back, you start pushing this back, you know, this back much further and you're, you're reducing the front yard and you're reducing the envelope.
Right, they're choosing.
What's the railroad?
They, they made a statement.
They're, they're choo, they're choosing to try to get a better building envelope in the rear.
Oh, making the ZBAs?
Smaller.
Yeah.
But, which they could do and, and probably design wise might be better.
Seventeen bats is tiny.
Um, but they could make them to twenty thousand square foot lots.
Right.
But that one back is going to have a very constrained building envelope. Which maybe what they do is go to and make them to twenty thousand square foot lots, but just go and get the relief for the zoning from the plane. The zoning.
A setback, yeah.
For the built, yeah, but that might be a better tool.
This is pre-application, right?
Yeah.
Maybe that's a better.
So you could suggest that as an alternative, maybe do that?
I mean, usually Christine doesn't ZBA go for the less.
And what about the railroad setback? If what's required from the railroad setback?
Please, no unnecessary.
The setback would be, setback would be, it would be better than lot.
That's the setback for the rear yard to the first building envelope, that's what they're showing.
Lot area, yeah.
Yeah.
What is, what's the footage on that, Teresa, for the railroad setback?
It's sixty.
Sixty from the center of the tracks or the?
From the property line.
From the property line, sixty feet.
There's a big hill behind, yeah.
So on recommendation number one, final subdivision approval can't be, cannot be granted unless the applicant obtains the necessary variances. Either, either a lot area.
I think Kathleen was suggesting, was supporting setback.
Or, or setback variance.
Or setback, yeah.
Yeah, it's the least, it's the least, um, it's less of a, a amount of relief. I wouldn't even say lot area, I'd, I'd just go with setback.
Okay.
Redesign to be to twenty thousand square feet lot, right?
Yeah, to twenty thousand.
Because it's forty, forty thousand.
Yeah, okay, that's good. Okay.
Okay.
And then the resolution does recommend that, after I amend the report, it does recommend that the report be sent to the zoning board when they submit application to the zoning board.
As our referral.
Yeah, per.
Yeah, that's, that's an item that you would put in, it's a portial constitution.
Is anyone here for this?
I think on Zoom.
They're on Zoom.
Oh, they're on Zoom, yes. So what, what's the name?
Sarah Churchill.
Is Sarah Churchill in the waiting room? On Zoom? Connection lost.
Okay, I, I did speak with her on the phone earlier this week. She said she was generally agreeable with the, the.
Jackie, one person is not creating to.
Oh, there is one person, okay, can you bring them in, please?
Hi, are you able to hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. So.
Could you give us your name?
Um, Sarah Churchill from North Star Engineering.
Okay.
Um, so I was listening in to the comments and I do think that we can make some changes to our site plan to accommodate those comments and the feedback. But my main question is with this, you know, trying to make both lots twenty thousand square feet. Are you saying that for the rear lot, you would be looking at the total area to be twenty thousand? Because right now, the lot area excluding the flag is already, you know, just above twenty thousand.
Correct. The, the area including the flag would be twenty thousand. We, we acknowledge the body of the lot would be less than twenty thousand, that's why we're.
Okay.
Suggesting you get, go to the zoning board to get setback relief.
Okay, so, um, you know, we can adjust our plan to try to accommodate that. And I, I understand that we would need a variance for the front yard setback, if that was the case. So, yeah, we can try to make that change and, and see how it affects the overall layout.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, um, just one other question about the setback or the easement, rather, for the railroad. So would that encompass, um, you had mentioned a sixty foot setback from the property line. Would that mean that they can't put any structures in that area? Would they also have to vegetate it or is it just an easement, not allow any development in that area?
I don't.
Like, would there need to get a screen, a vegetated screen?
Uh, it would just be that you, you leave it alone, uh, no vegetation and no, no development and no cutting of the existing vegetation.
And no structures.
And no structures.
Got it, okay, thank you for clarifying.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board?
Motion to adopt the report.
Motion to adopt by Dennis, second by Craig, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, six, a five in favor, two absent. Thanks, Teresa. Claire, you have the PUCO?
Yeah, that's an extension, the action deadline for a month.
Yeah.
Uh, till February eighth. We're still waiting updated plans, which we, we read with the town engineer and then we'll review the staff report on this one.
Is one month okay or do you want to do?
Yeah, oh, they're, they're, they're very close.
They're close, okay.
We'll see them on the twenty-fifth for discussion, but I just wanted to make sure that action deadline is pushed to the eighth on this one.
Okay. Motion to extend PUCO to Feb eighth. Motion. Motion by Craig, second by Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, five in favor, two absent. Number eight, Tens Marine Inc.
Yeah, so that one you approved back in October. This was to replace two buildings and, with another building. This is a very small change, it's been gone to this ARB. They changed the building to be a prefab peaked roof, but they're now going to make it sloped away from the building so they could have more access to it. I'll just briefly show it to you, but it's pretty, pretty easy.
I can remember this, yeah.
So it's now just going to be this sloped roof.
Yeah.
And very, yeah, but away from the, the new property line.
Mm-hmm.
So I thought it was pretty straightforward, so I prepared a resolution for approval based on this plan.
Okay.
Looking for your consideration. So if you want to adopt it, do you want to see the resolution just says, we'll put it in play?
Yeah, let us see the resolution, you can just pass it out.
Sure. Of course.
Yeah.
I don't remember this one, do you have an overhead picture of it?
Of course, yes, so this one, here is, here's the site plan. Do you mind pulling up ten S Marina? It is twenty-three Ram Pastor Road. This is an existing marina in Hampton Bays. There was two existing buildings here.
This is the building close to the.
One, one, two, and then it's being replaced by this one building away from the wetlands. It's where it gets the Westland sound.
I remember.
Now it's forty feet, we have already weighed on it. Exact same squish, square footage or actually four feet, square feet less, so.
Okay, any questions?
No.
Motion by George, second by Kate, all in favor? Opposed, extensions, five in favor, two absent. New Singular Claire, number nine.
So this one, uh, you originally got last year, um, and we were waiting for an old endorsement and an updated survey for the clearing, which they just gave me today. This is an existing, um, anything you might want to know about?
What's that?
New Singular, three forty, Great Hill Road. And I have a resolution for you there. Do you have any plans? Or do you give them to me, give them to me?
I can begin.
You probably did. Yep, I have them. This new plan shows the, um.
Were they replacing something, Claire?
Yes, they're, so. With existing cell towers, you can put up to six new antennas on them. They're asking for twelve in this case. Um, it's an existing tower, we do encourage this, but it does require site plan approval, so it does come to look at you. Um, there are on the, this is a, a situation where the tower is external, it's got the guide wires, um, but they're doing additional antennas on it. I do have those plans that show the antennas add, being added to them.
So there are six on there now and they're adding six?
Um, right now, I'm not quite sure how, what their number is, but the total is twelve. So once you go above number six, it has to come to plan for review.
How tall is this?
Existing sa, uh, cell tower. You want to come up here?
Yeah.
Just sit down by yourself.
I'm Molly Brennan, attorney with Phillips Liedel, we represent New Singular Wireless. And just want to say that Claire, you've got a good hand on deck with Claire, she is.
We know that.
So talented.
I know where.
Uh, so the existing tower is a hundred and sixty feet. The equipment we will be adding will be at a hundred and two feet, we're not increasing the height. As Claire is very familiar with, this is just an addition of equipment to an existing cellular tower, which means that it falls under a federal law that was created in twenty twelve to try to expedite new cellular service for public safety, basically. We all know that spotty service is annoying, but when you're in an emergency, it's scary. So we will be adding twelve antennas, it will not increase the height, as I already said. It will not add more than four cabinets and it will not require any work outside the site. It will not require any disturbance to what is already disturbed now, so we won't be changing any disturbance on the site. Claire noted that we needed to supply a plan that showed how much clearing there was now as part of the aquifer protection overlay district. And with Claire's help, we have now submitted plans today that I think apply with what you had requested. And total clearance right now is, sorry, vegetative clearance is sixteen point four percent. And we don't propose to do any additional.
Can I just ask? So it's an older tower, right?
Oh, yeah.
With the external.
Yeah, they're existing.
We're just co-locating on the tower.
Yeah.
Can I just ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
So Claire, you were saying up to twelve, and then you.
Up to six is a building permit.
Oh.
So they'd be entitled to that as of rights.
Okay.
And when you go above the six, it comes to you, just to see, that might want more, it's more cabinets, that might go outside the cabinet area, but to date, it's been fine, there's no other issues.
So you said, um, you, I thought you said that there are six or seven now, an additional six. This is an addition of twelve.
Yes.
What is it?
They may have existing antennas on the property now.
So we're co-locating on the tower, we're not there now. Um, and we're co-locating under this federal law that allows us to expedite the approval.
Right. I was just trying to get to what is the total number?
Twelve.
Adding twelve, not adding to get to twelve?
Right.
Okay, got it.
They're not, yeah, they don't have any on that.
No co-location.
I didn't have that knowledge, but I knew they needed us anyways because they're way above the twelve. If they were doing a swap out, again, it would be a building permit, just to swap something out.
Yeah, and so we have filed our paperwork with the building department. Because it's under this expedited federal law, it's subject to a time constraint and that what is called a shock law is going to expire January thirtieth. That's why Claire's been working so closely with us to expedite sort of working through this part of the process so that we can get the building department to review and weigh in before January thirty.
Okay.
Is that answer?
Yeah, definitely, thank you.
All twelve antennas the same size?
Uh, yes. And include radio heads as well and a cabinet on the ground, but already on a above grade, um, existing platform, so.
It's definitely a dead zone there.
It's beautiful up there.
Any other questions?
The aquifer protection overlay district.
Yes.
Yeah, it's really gorgeous.
Any other questions? Okay, motion to approve by Dennis, second by Craig, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, five in favor, two absent. Anthony, you have, have ten six Realty Corp?
Yeah, unfortunately, they couldn't come today, so, uh, we're doing an extension till January twenty-fifth.
Okay, an extension to January twenty-fifth, motion by Craig, second by Dennis, all in favor?
Aye.
Five in favor, two absent. Certain solar.
Yeah, yeah, we had a work session last time or a month ago. So the board might recall, um, we did, with this board approved, right here in Enterprise Zone, actually, right up here in the highlighted property, a battery energy storage system for which they had an approval, conditional approval. That approval remains, you know, it was bound until twenty twenty-five, however, a moratorium was put in place, as you know, so they can't proceed with that. They weren't able to even get to the point of getting maps stamped and then proceeding to the building permit. So you might recall, part of that application had a second phase that was reviewed at the time. It was a, what would now be defined as a small scale solar component, under five thousand square feet. So what they asked for, remember from the last meeting, was to come in and simply modify the approval that was already granted for the entirety of the project to eliminate all the best components and then to just proceed with the clearing and the installation of the forty-four solar panels and associated equipment. And so they did in fact, you know, submit revised plans, chose bare minimum improvements happening there, just the clearing, which sits at thirty-five percent, they're allowed fifty, by the way, under the code, or under the subdivision.
Thirty-five percent clear?
They're doing thirty-five percent. So because this is just a modification to that approval, I have a resolution here. And if we just go to, you know, we didn't need to do it public here, we didn't really need to do any other referrals since everything had already been reviewed. So I have a resolution to approve the modification, which is to eliminate all components of the battery energy storage system and to permit the installation of a small scale. of the battery energy storage system, and to permit the installation of a small-scale solar project, which includes forty-four solar panels and associated equipment, along with the clearing. Just a little side note for the board, the way the code is written, technically speaking, um, small-scale, um, solar projects are, are eligible for an administrative site plan review. They don't have to come to this board. However, you have to have a site plan approval in order to, to do an administrative, and I don't have site plans for this, so they had no choice but to come back here, so. So recommend the approval subject to the following conditions. Number one, um, condition of approval, and with the filing of a covenant, the property owner believes there shall be no vested rights claimed for any component of the battery energy storage system, which shall be binding upon the parties heretofore and their respective successors and assigns, and as a covenant, that shall run with the land. So that's really just to, you know, protect us there. Uh, B talks about the northern long-eared bat, so this talks about the seasonal tree cutting requirement, and that anything outside of that requires taking permit from the, or take permit from the state. Uh, installation of the project limiting fence, um, at the edge of the proposed clearing to be inspected by staff prior to the issuance of a building permit. No additional clearing, um, without further planning board approval. Uh, both a building permit and an electrical permit shall be obtained from the installation of the solar panels and equipment. Uh, these conditions, by the way, that I'm reading to you, come directly from the code as it relates to small-scale, um, commercial products, so I wanted to make sure we just covered them. Um, F is the solar system shall be designed, erected, and installed in accordance with all applicable, uh, codes and requirements and industry standards. Um, access to the solar energy system should be maintained, includes no removal and any other obstruction. Uh, solar energy systems, components, and associated equipment shall have required working space clearances, um, weatherproof enclosures, so forth. Solar panels shall have anti-reflective coating to prevent glare. Uh, proof of adequate liability insurance for the solar energy system shall be provided prior to the issuance of a building permit. Um, the solar energy system shall be maintained in good working order and within the G standards. And, uh, the owner of the property, should the, the property, the, the use become defunct or, you know, not being used, the town then has this section of the code, which allows them to go in there and tell them to do something about it. Unlike, when you get to a special exception, because we'll see this eventually, special exception for a large-scale, commercial one, has a decommissioning, uh, plan requirement and a decommissioning fund. So they put this in here for smaller scales, so that the building department could have them take it down. L and M talk about the lighting requirements, uh, no dusted-out lighting, and the lighting shall be shielded downwards, although I anticipate there will be very little, uh, minimal lighting with this. Um, arrange for a pre-construction meeting with the engineering division prior to construction. To be completed prior to signature, submission of all specification sheets for the manufactured components. Uh, notarized affidavit indicating compliance with the site plan conditions. Uh, C is submitting six sets of plans for signature. Um, and then to be cleared prior to the issuance of the CO or CC, I should say, uh, an as-built survey, so I can verify that clearing is in thirty-five, the limits that were put on the plan. Uh, and that's all I have for that.
Okay, is there anyone here? Yes.
Good afternoon, John Robert Tano from Farrell Fritz, works at the applicant. We have seen a copy of the draft resolution, we concur with all the conditions, and we appreciate the voice, time, and currencies that have been extended to us on this application.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, any questions from the board?
No?
Okay, motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by George, second by Dennis, all in favor. And close extensions, five in favor, two absent. That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can you check, do you mind if I just do Monty Calvo, because that's my last actual, because then I can get ready for the meeting.
Yep. Number eighteen is Montecalvo, is ZDA with Pearl.
Let me just, real quick here.
Let me just acknowledge the signed plans, okay?
Yeah, okay.
Number nineteen, Pecanic Beverage, we're acknowledging. Number twenty, George Hastings, acknowledged. Number twenty-one, Chickenbrier Hill, acknowledged. And then we added, um, these are add-ons, the Cordis Family Limited was signed, and fourteen, Flying Point, was signed. Okay? So that's all, all those are done.
Okay. So, Monty Calvo, um, let me preface this by saying that Dave Gil-Martin is going to be coming back to this board for a work session with his engineering team, um, to present this application in more detail to the board.
Right.
This is Bianc Riverhead Road, um, ignore this shaded here, I don't know why that is. Uh, everyone's familiar, you have, um, you know, Old Country Road to the south, and then the highway to north. It's a largely industrial area with a mix of industrial uses, special trade contractor, you know, gravel mining facilities and so forth, asphalt crushing. And right now, they're currently before the zoning board of appeals, as you can see here, um, some of the land to the south, the properties in question are the three lots in here. Some of this is LI forty, uh, to the south, and a lot of this is CR two hundred that contain industrial land uses. Monty Calvo, um, who owns actually this business down here, is in for a use variance with the zoning board of appeals for these three properties, one, two, three. Ignoring the fact that there's encroachments on there, they're before the zoning board of appeals for a use variance, because it's CR two hundred, um, but they're looking for, it's roughly sixty thousand square feet of special trade contractor uses, um, it's gonna be ten thousand square foot office space. There's, there's significant square footage, um, and they're asking for a use variance from the zoning board of appeals.
It's CR two hundred now?
It's CR two hundred now.
They can't put in, uh, they can't do that under CR two hundred?
No, it's a residential zone.
Oh, CR, I'm thinking LI.
Yeah, no, you're thinking LI, that's exactly right.
Oh, okay.
So they, so they couldn't, and, you know, it, it doesn't seem to be any town, you know, interest right now in doing the wholesale, uh, rezoning of the area, so.
How did I get CR two hundred up there? Everything, how'd I get CR two hundred up there, when everything else is light and dusted?
You know, it probably started with Pine Barren stuff way back in the day. It, it is compatible growth area as well. So, and this includes, you know, two hundred parking spaces, so it's a type-one action under SECRE. So the zoning board's already got an application. First thing they said was, you're gonna have to go and, the planning board and SECRE and all this stuff, so they coordinated with this board. So really, all I just wanted to do today was, so this board's saying they're interested in being lead agency, so I could send that back to the zoning board, because they're going to stop everything then. You're looking at it because I think of timeframes then. Dave Gil-Martin has given us a written waiver of all SECRE timeframes, once you establish lead agency, um, because he's gonna come back and go through this whole project with the board, and then we could talk about what information we would need and, and all the rest of it, and how we proceed with SECRE. The purpose was, though, to just let the zoning board know, yes, planning board wants to be lead agency. Dave Gil-Martin indicated to the zoning board at that meeting. I assume that this board doesn't wanna be lead agency, and that the planning board will. Um, and so basically, we could just do the lead agency, goes back to the zoning board. The zoning board says, okay, planning board wants to be lead agency, we can't do anything now until they're done with SECRE, and then everything's in, in your hands. If the board, for some reason, is not comfortable doing that at this point, Dave said that we could adjourn the matter. I don't particularly care, because I got the, the written waiver of SECRE timeframe. So now you don't have, when you do lead agency, thirty days to make a SECRE determination.
Anthony, have they considered a zone change rather than a use variance? If it's CR two hundred.
Yes, I, I, I believe they have. Um, I, 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 like, like, nobody wants to go to the zoning board of appeals for a use variance.
No.
I mean, that's just, you know, that's just, nobody wants to do that. Um, so I, you know, I believe they're there, because this is sort of the direction they felt they only had at this point.
Rather than a zone change, rather than make a commercial.
Zone change is legislative act, it's much high, believe it or not, it's a higher bar.
Is there any pre-existing non-conforming on there now?
There's some encroachment.
Like, is it a non-conforming use?
There's some encroachment, um...
Right.
Right here, from this business down here.
But that's his business, right?
But that's, but that's his business, but they don't have any, uh, as far as, any approval for any pre-existing businesses.
Approved pre-existing, or, you're like, oh, yeah, okay.
Compatible growth? Compatible growth?
Yeah, compatible growth.
Gotta go to Pine Barren.
They go to Pine Barren, yeah.
It's gotta go to the Pine Barrens.
Would they need a waiver for this?
Potentially.
Yeah.
This, and then that's the whole, the thing here, is that, you know, we're gonna have a work session with, with the applicant.
Yeah.
Yes, it's major.
You know, so I didn't know if the, if the planning board had any concerns about just saying, hey, we'd like to be lead agency on this.
No, of course, I think so, sure.
Absolutely.
Does it waiver from?
A waiver from the Pine Downs.
Development waiver from the Pine Barrens.
Pine Downs, can they send everyone better than that?
It's, this is, this is a tough application.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not gonna be a...
Not an easy one.
No, it won't be, so, we'll, we'll, um, so then the action is that the planning board, um...
Assumes lead agency?
Well, well, it, uh, let's, it's only our message.
That's gonna be our message, our report to the DB.
Yeah, okay.
You need a resolution to know.
Motion?
Yeah.
Motion by Dennis, second by Craig, all in favor. Close extension, five in favor, two absent. Okay, we've done nineteen, we've done twenty, twenty-one.
What about, is like...
Go back, Claire.
And we gotta go back to Claire's up to Breachhampton Commons.
You're done, Anthony, right?
You, you, here, you want?
I, uh, I'll use that, leaving up for this one.
Claire, the Breachhampton Commons, the Barnes and Noble sign?
Uh, yeah, Kevin, um, I think Gina or someone from Mercari signs might be on.
What were the names again?
Gina?
All that's on here is Gina.
Uh, okay, hmm, okay.
Carl's breathing at us.
Oh, is this the one where they violated the, the sign standards?
Yes, well, Claire went through a whole analysis, and yes, oversized.
Okay, so, this is what we looked at at, on the December fourteenth meeting. And the chair at the time, and I think the board agreed, they had put the sign up, which was, you know, I'm sure you love, already, for the Barnes and Noble, which is in there. Um, but it looked large in respect, so I did pull out the original, this, the sign approval. Um, and it does look like, um, that it is large. I, just doesn't, it doesn't actually have the dimensions here, which is actually, I emailed them to ask them what that dimension is on the length of the sign. But jet, basically, looking through the signs, they're between eight and twelve feet, you know? So if they can be twelve or less, I think that's something you might be able to approve. So if they are not here today, I can give them that feedback, and we'll use that.
Yeah, absolutely.
And just again, Walgreens is the closest one, which was another, like, individual sign rather than the, the one with the, um, master sign plan, and that's eleven feet. But you can see it's centered in the window, where this one is obviously larger than the overhead window.
It was like, oh, twenty feet, right?
So it does, that's why you, from the look of it, it looked larger. Though it complies with the code, it does, but just the whole master plan of what you've worked on.
Yeah.
That makes sense, so, um, I'll give that feedback to the applicant.
But it complies with the code, but not with the sign standards? It complies with the code, but not the sign standards?
It complies with the code, but you, your purview in the ARBs is designed. So the entire, everybody else is at max twelve.
Twelve feet.
Right.
Whatever this is, it's gotta be, it's more than twelve.
Yeah.
You know, because just looking at that window, it just looks like it is, so.
Was it an honest mistake, or was it a...
Oh, I think they just said, oh, it complies with the code, which is true, but the, the whole...
You give a, it's a whole sign plan for this.
It's a whole master sign plan in design as part of your purview, which is great, so, I can give that for all.
Yeah, right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we spent a good amount of time on that.
We spent a lot of time. So what's our action?
Um, nothing right now, I'm going to give the feedback, like, come back with a plan that shows the, the sign at twelve feet.
Just reduce it, make it twelve feet.
Yeah, and then give us a new plan that shows that.
Yeah.
I think that, that's good feedback, so, no action on that.
No action. Fourteen is Lowe's and Fishes, that's Carl.
Blessing Fields, number thirteen?
Oh, sorry, 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 sorry. Blessing Fields, sorry.
That's very polite, Carl.
So Blessing Fields, um, and I will pull it up here, so you can see the plan, so I just wanna be sure. Let me have this. Well, good afternoon.
Hi. Mike Spiano and Sabrina Kelly from Inter-Sign Research Associates, I'm glad to be at the applicant. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
So what you get for being number thirteen on the agenda here? Your last.
So where we're at is that we've reviewed this, uh, site plan, and we've been waiting for the town engineer on this, and they've come back with some conditions, which will make, uh, conditions of approval in this case. But I want to show you the latest site plan on this. So it's a long, skinny piece of property, that's actually part of, uh, west of that office building that you looked at, right? Um, it is across from the, um, this is the lights for Macy's.
Macy's, yeah.
Yeah, so they do have that advantage. They're doing a small office building in the front, and a larger, um, building for special trade contractor uses in the back. So, um, they've worked on their plans, got them down to a couple of conditions with the town engineer, so we'll leave those as conditions of approval.
Do you have the report, Claire?
I do, and I wanna...
Did you leave it up? I think it's probably in that packet.
No, I haven't.
Oh, you have it.
Here.
There's something over here, are these?
Yep, that's my Blessing Fields, there you go. Okay, this is the approval resolution, and this is, this, this, this just talks about the town engineer conditions, if you wanna look at them, but that's up to you. Let me just briefly read them off, with, yeah, okay, so it's on page, uh, four of the stack reports, who reviewed the plans. It's more than one acre, so it's gonna need a CDs permits. Um, depict ADA signs, existing contours should be like gray, and proposed, depict proposed contours. The fire apparatus road may not overlap with parking spaces. Designer may want to consider removing the current islands between the two buildings. It may make plowing operations difficult. It'd be difficult to install the proposed A by twelve, um, TA four, uh, so close to the property lines. So you, they're gonna pull out, they're gonna pull those back, we talked about that. Details extend still fencing to property line for, with railroad for cleanup of existing material stockpiles, um, and the engineering fees for this. And I've talked to the town engineer, and they're fine with these being conditions of approval.
Okay.
Um, so I am...
So you've incorporated them?
Yes, I have incorporated, I just make them by reference, uh, because some of them were just comments, obviously, but... So they will have to comply with that. If you wanna go to the conditions on page two.
Sure.
This will be a special exception approval, and, um, the conditions for the site plan. That, uh, one A, all plans shall match the parking layout with the required turning radius. Um, B is note the location of two chargers, I'm sorry, electric, EV charging stations, right?
Mm-hmm.
On the parking lots. Um, and then note the first two ADA spaces to have a shared eighty-foot wide aisle. Compliance with Department of Public Safety comments, these are things like the Knox box, those kinds of things listed. Uh, E, we talked about. Uh, F is the lighting on the poles, and on the building should be mounted no more than ten foot above gray, that's pretty typical. And then note this dumpster to be enclosed in landscaping pursuant to the code. Uh, number two A is the removed material to be non-reflective, this was a condition of the ARB. And then three A, B, and C, they're all pretty general, the screening of the HVAC systems, the no dusted-out lighting fixtures, and all prosos light shall be shielded. Four A is the future cross-access easement agreement for vehicular between the subject property and the property immediately adjacent to the east and west. Title search, mortgage consent, town journey approval, the payment of the town engineer fee affidavit. It's actually six sets of plans, so I'm gonna change that. And maintenance bond for the landscaping that they proposed.
Have you considered, uh, any solar on your buildings?
Uh, we have not, only because at this point, uh, I guess we had been through, it had not been considered up to this point. I know that you guys discussed it at length.
You just heard that today, right?
Uh, yes, um...
That's why I'm asking you.
Um, I think it would, I mean, it would require going back through the, uh, Architects Review Board too, but, um...
Are they flat, is it a flat roof or pitch roof?
They don't, they don't need that protection, we won't.
No, it's a pitch roof.
You don't have to, no.
Oh, they don't? Okay. Um, I guess we could bring it up, but, uh, it's not something that's been contemplated, I know that.
Well, we're, you know, before it's, and, and we have enabling legislation, we're really pushing for it, because it's part of the climate action plan, so, would you think, would your client be open to that?
We'll encourage it.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm just not, I'm not certain, just because it, it hasn't been something that we've discussed yet. Um, and, um, I just know that we've been through, uh, a lengthy process with this, and I'm not sure, um... I know that they've redesigned some things to a certain extent, and I'm...
and I'm just not, I can't, I cannot commit to that for them at this point in time, so.
And it's not something we can impose.
We can encourage it.
But we've been adding it as a recommendation to the commission.
We could, yeah, can we do it as a finding at least? How can we handle it?
We have the typical statement in the, in your staff report, page eleven. Do you want me to put it as a general condition?
As a what?
By board supports.
Yeah, the board supports, absolutely, it's in here.
I can, I can do that as, do you want me to do it as a finding, or, or a general?
Yeah, I think the finding is, because, because.
It's number N in the, on page eleven, number N, it's our sustainability. We consider incorporating sustainability, design green standards, to the extent where possible, but not limited to rooftop, solar, electric, da-da-da-da, yeah. There it is.
I like it.
There it is, but there it ain't.
I guarantee you, we're not gonna have solar panels in this building.
Might get the back, I mean, the back building would definitely be appropriate.
Yeah, would be perfect.
Yeah.
Well, let's put it in as.
Uh, I can do it as a general condition?
I would, I would have to ask, so how does that work if we put a condition on that the roof material is non-reflective but aren't solar panels reflective?
No, they're not.
They're not, okay, I just wasn't sure.
No, there's, actually.
Making sure that there wasn't a contradiction.
Solar panels can, or, design.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
It's gonna be viewed as a recommendation, not a, you shall install.
Okay, good. Yeah, I'm just making sure.
But we'll refer to you as the model building, you say.
Think of all the love that will come your way.
And you'll save some costs.
Do you want me to do it as a finding?
Yeah, because it's in, certainly it's in our special exception standards.
Add, you know, a statement in your report that the planning board has recently reviewed the, started to review the climate action plan was adopted by the town board on some, so date. And they strongly recommend it, we'll put it in a general condition
Right.
to put solar at a minimum on the property, it would be strongly supported or something to that.
Exactly, I think so.
Okay.
And we have it as, you know, page eleven in the report, as a special exception standard, the sustainability thing.
I can feel your enthusiasm coming on.
Well, no, maybe you will.
I'm sorry, I'm a little tired.
Well, you've had a long day, we have too.
I know, I know, but since ten-thirty this morning? Yeah, I, I understand. No, I, I will definitely speak with my clients about it.
Please, yeah.
No, I, I know that it's important, and, so we'll speak with them and try to encourage them to do it.
Great.
Thanks. You're welcome.
And ask for more, thank you.
So for your consideration for a conditional approval?
Okay, anything more? We have one of those pads.
Yeah, it, it eliminates some of the paper at my office, at least in my sphere, but, yeah.
Any other questions? Motion to adopt? By Kate, second by Craig, all in favor. I oppose abstentions, five in favor, two absent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks for considering the solar.
I'll do what I can to encourage them. Thanks.
My next one is Loews and Fishes, so.
Yeah.
I got the latest plans from the applicants. When we review this on December fourteenth, there was some discussion in the planning board was supportive of utilizing the cross-access as a waiver for.
Reduce, get rid of the line of path, right?
The seven spaces to the north, which is the, the, the chair had mentioned to be supportive of in the beginning. But yes, it does work, so the cross-access allows the waiver of up to ten spaces, they're proposing the nine. There's the seven on the property line, and two involved with the property to, that there's netting of, the Bridgehampton Inn property. It does work, so. So this would be the plan that you would be issuing the negative declaration for. I have prepared the back of the resolution. And the part two, we have.
And thank you for considering, Carl. Can you give us your name, please?
Carl Manicosta for the applicant. Eight-sixty Monton Highway, Watermill, New York. Do you have the resolution? Yes? Yep. That's Rothlin Dynasty. Everyone just leaves their stuff.
It's all my stuff.
It's all clear.
It's all my stuff. Well, this is the part two, the resolution.
Is somewhere.
Is somewhere.
Alacat, we should be, we get away from people.
Well, we tried with those iPads, right?
Remember those?
And they were useless, oh my God. We couldn't get into them, they were never.
There were seven of them set up. This is back when I was.
Yeah, when you were ten, ten. They were deserved to.
So my suggestion with this is that we proceed with the negative declaration, so allow the ZBA to go forward. Also, do you want to, I didn't prepare it, but do you want to update your report to the ZBA with just a sentence that says, based upon the revised plan you support?
Yeah, you still have to go, but you don't have to go to the ZBA now.
There are, there's further relief we need.
Right.
So portions of that, I don't have the plan actually.
Here, take this.
So there's setback relief here, and here, and here that we need?
How much?
Less than ten percent, they're very minor variances. Yeah, and then you still need relief here, because this is still a thirty-four-foot buffer when a fifty is required. But to provide context, the previous iteration of this plan, which was approved by the planning board and given variances by the zoning board, had the parking, I think it was about ten feet, a lot running the whole length.
But that was another animal.
It was, it was, it was the same relief.
It was another animal.
It's not gonna end.
Same species.
Had more, sorry.
Does utilizing the cross-access as parking relief provide you, you still now meet parking requirements on the site? And then you were short before, but you now meet?
No, we were compliant with parking, and we weren't asking for parking variances. We actually, we're not utilizing the full relief possible. And Claire consulted with our architect, and they determined that we actually, the amount of space we were giving for cross-access allowed us to eliminate those seven spaces.
Great, good. So you still have to go, so we have to update the ZBA report.
I think so, I think you would just say that you were in favor of the plan as, as designed, this plan. So I would have referenced that and sent a fresh report over, does this make sense?
And that the parking is compliant, and this only needs your setback relief, that's all, right?
Set, well, there's buffer relief and setback relief, but we, that's all we ever were asking for. But I would, I think you need to amend the pre-application report.
Yes, so that is our ZBA report, is the.
Oh, you're setting that as a.
So we're gonna revise that.
And so I'm just going to reference the latest plan, and the first sentence will be that the planning board supports, the latest version is noted here.
And with detail?
Yes, that it shows the elimination and the proposed setback of whatever that shows, I think it's thirty feet, right?
Thirty-one, I think it was, but how, again, I don't have a plan. Thank you.
Carl, you'll send us that, that report when you revise it?
Yes.
Thirty-four point three.
Thirty-one.
One point, but at its closest, it's thirty-one point six.
Point six, perfect, so I'll reference that right in the report. So two actions I suggest to you, one would be to issue the negative declaration.
Okay, so let's do that.
Is Dennis recused on this?
No, no, he, he had to leave.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so a motion to deem a neg-deck for the application? A motion by George, second by Kate, all in favor. I oppose abstentions, four in favor, three absent. And then the second action is to.
Update the report to the zoning board appeals and the town's pre-commissioned profits report to reflect your support of the plan, the third one.
So.
And acknowledge the relief from parking.
Yeah.
Or the credit from parking in consideration of the cross-access.
Cross-access, exactly, all of them, I'm not repeating it. All in favor? Motion, motion, motion by George, second by Craig, all in favor.
Aye.
Oppose abstentions, four in favor, three absent.
Thank you very much. Good to see you.
When are they, when are they gonna start doing that?
Well, we gotta come back to you for final.
For final, that's right.
And then after that.
And the last.
It'll be summer.
It'll, it'll be fall by the time, because it's you guys and then the, we need a building permit, that's going to take forever.
Okay, so the next one is Atlantic Golf Club.
It's off the agenda.
Is off the agenda.
Well, thank you, good luck.
Then we did it.
Motion to adjourn?
We made it.
Yeah.
You did the referrals.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Yes, motion to adjourn.
Motion by George, second by Kate, all in favor.
Aye.
Four in favor. Three absent. I will not be here tonight, Dennis will be here.
Okay. Next.